Good evening. Oops, wait a minute. Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with religion and justice for all.
Sandy, if you could please read our mission statement and take role.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in the global community. I'll start up there. Board member Teltow?
Here.
Board member Cunningham. Board member Aldani is absent with notice. Board member Mashaun?
Here.
Board member Bartel?
Here.
Board member Sutton is also absent with notice. And my new board member Vertuna. And here we have the board.
Thank you very much. Before we approve our agenda, we are going to amend it. We are going to remove item 9H. I'm looking for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Mr. Wilson.
In your back end, you'll see the personnel report. There are just a couple of vacant positions that we have been integrating this week and have some really awesome candidates that we should be finalizing this week and beginning of next week. There were two questions regarding the claims and accounts that I received. One was regarding the cost to the AP exam, $62 to $170. That is the cost the district pays to pay for the AP exams. If you recall, about a year ago, we put into the handbook that any student taking an AP class, we would pay for the exam. That is our cost for the 23, 24 school year second semester. There's another question that was asked regarding the SETSEG, a little over $99,000. That is our liability insurance for all of our buses and our workman's comp. The station insurance for everybody but teachers. Teachers are run through Mesa. Those are the two questions. There were no questions or concerns regarding the minutes either.
And I have any questions for Mr. Wilson? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our nomination for Vice President.
Sorry.
Yep, no?
Now that you've approved the agenda, I'd like to officially introduce Billy. Billy Sispaniac is our Director of Curriculum and Educational Services. She began August 1st, so she has hit the ground running.
Thank you.
Billy was an ISD consultant last two years and high school principal prior to that. Had a lot of experience working with the State Department and all the other logistics and stuff that we had to do with. We're excited to have you.
Thank you. Very excited to meet you.
At this time, I'm looking for a nomination for the position of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Hi, nominee. Margaret Teltow would be the Vice President of the Board of Education.
Margaret, do you accept?
Sure.
Are there any other nominations for the position of Vice President? Okay, being no other nominations. All those in favor of Margaret Teltow as Vice President of the Board of Education for the term of August 12th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, that's right.
Well, I would recommend that maybe we wait till we have the full board for the...
Treasurer.
Yeah. Well, because quite frankly, I was gonna nominate Danielle, and she's not here to accept that. So I mean, I guess you can do what we want, but maybe with the full board.
Technically, there's only gonna be one signature. The board requires two signature accounts.
Oh, technically, there you go. Well, can you nominate someone who's not sitting, that's not here?
No, because they have to accept.
They have to accept.
Yep.
I can nominate myself then?
That's true.
Okay, so I'm looking for a nomination of Treasurer of the Board of Ed. We have Candace. Candace, do you agree? Okay, are there any other nominations? All those in favor of Candace Cunningham being the Treasurer of the Board of Education for the term of August 12th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil Raves. We'll start with... Tracy, I know you're new to this. I made popsicle sticks on everybody, so I just draw. So Sandy, you're first.
Okay, so I don't wanna take too much of the thunderwakes. I'm sure that Candace is gonna talk a lot because her kids did it and everything, but I did go and watch the band perform right after their band camp. And I'm always wowed by them. They did such a great job. It was just a real pleasure to watch them. They always surprised me, even though I shouldn't be surprising more. But they just did a really awesome job. So kudos to whoever was involved in that. And you know, Molly Shack and whoever else. I'm sure she had a team of people. Great job. Good job, guys.
All set?
Yep.
Tracy?
Yeah, so I have a chance to check in on band camp as well, so I'm just gonna reiterate what was already said. But you know, when you hear that music come floating out at you from wherever you are, if you're walking down Main Street or whatever, it just reminds me that there are so many people who work all summer long, right? In education, to do what's necessary for our kids. And so I just would honor that and appreciate that, that there's very few days of the summer vacation in reality. And so again, kudos to the band, kudos to the good work. When I was watching, there were so many people laughing while they were doing hard work. And that just is a really good thing to see in here.
Thank you. Margaret? Candace?
Yeah, so I did wanna give a shout out to Shag and all of her team for all the hard work that they did put into it all week long. The kids really worked hard, I mean sweating, sweating. And they had rain days, so they weren't able to go outside. So they have a little bit of us against them on that. But they put it together and the band boosters, catering to all their needs all week, food, drinks, everything. There was a lot, a lot of sign of genius, a lot of parental volunteers that made that all, helped out, work out with all the strawberries that they made. So many strawberry. But so yes, huge shout out to the kids to do great. And Joseph, you too.
Thank you. I don't have anything to add. You have all set my count of the bands, so we'll leave it at that. Okay, next item on our agenda is the 2024 Summer Academic Enrichment and High School Credit Recovery Programs. Mr. Wilson?
So I'm gonna introduce Mrs. Schleyhuber. And Mrs. Cranton here, come up. And I'll pull the PowerPoint up. Just give me one second.
Ms. Clausen, too, she says.
Yes.
So Mrs. Schleyhuber was the summer school coordinator. And Mrs. Cranton oversaw the high school credit recoveries, the two of them. And Mrs. Clausen, one of our teachers there, helped with a lot of the planning and preparation on the front end.
Am I supposed to show up on here also?
No.
It's not. So you have to...
I hope not.
Okay, okay. Great. Okay, so that's enrollment by grade. Well, obviously the... Wow, that's really hard to read. Oh. Okay, so the bottom, the biggest enrollment is pre-K. So we had over 15 students enroll pre-K in kindergarten, 40. So together, almost 100 kids under five this year, which was really awesome to see. Yeah. And then if you just go up through, it's grade one and then even middle school. So grade six through eight, we had about 15 kids, six through eight grade. And trends, enrollment trends are higher. So if you look each year, it's grown a lot. And to be honest, we were coming up, we came up with a few different enrichment camps. So it's just really needing more space, to be honest with you. So many of the rooms at Lee Elementary were full of teachers and keeping the class sizes and the ratios, 15 to 18 to the teacher ratio. So it was, so 242 students enrolled this summer. And then here is some of our enrichment camps. We had a couple of new ones. Our name was Popular. We ran two sections with about 23 kids in each. And then we had cadets in each one. That was a favorite. Camp Marvel, superhero themed with writing and all the superhero. Tinker's Sun Camp, Lego City, we ran three sections of that. Yoga and mindfulness, it was a huge hit. The feedback was great from the students, too. Arts and crafts, Get Moving, and Camp Fire Stories. So there's a couple of pictures there. And then our registration event, we ran it on a Friday evening, very similar to last year. We had over 100 students show up. Lesson learned, I think we kind of went a little too late this time because spring, the sports kind of started and things were already happening. But the enrollments came in through the schools quick, too. So that was fun.
You mean do it earlier in the year?
Yes.
This time?
Lego City, there's a couple of pictures. Yeah, Miss Cranton?
This is my group. I went section to Lego City. The picture of them outside, they created parachutes for their Lego figures. And they went outside and they could throw them up and watch them. And then we also did it inside so they could see the difference. But the kids absolutely loved Legos. And every day was a dream for them, something for them to build. And the creativity is amazing.
So Camp Fire Stories is fine. But before I speak to that too, I just wanted to say like this year, what we did different, too, is we had lesson plans for like the enrichment camps, I should say for that. And just so everybody knows, academic camps were in the morning and the enrichment camps were in the afternoon. So for the enrichment camps, like the new camps and even the camps that we had in the past, we did like lesson plans, daily lesson plans and came up with like necessary materials. So like if somebody wanted to like participate in summer camp, but was nervous about what to do or what I would need, I think that helps some of our new people. Because we had some new teachers to the district this year that ended up doing summer camp and loved it. But it was easier for them to have that outline, like just a piece of comfort in hand. So that was something new, I feel like we did this year that was like really good. Camp Fire Stories is amazing, to be honest with you. The district provides this huge tent in the media center at Lee. And the kids, like actually not even just the Camp Fire Stories, students, like students from the academic camps in the morning, we had a lot of hot days, too, would love to go in there and read. So a lot of kids just really enjoyed this huge tent. And I would think like 40 people could fit in there at one time. It was just amazing. We did birdhouses, which they had to paint and piece together. We did tissue paper flowers. We went on scavenger hunts. I mean, like this is my second year doing it. And like I was sad to leave, to be honest with you. Like I felt like last year, when I was thinking about what I would say today in front of you guys, just the relationships with the students like is outstanding. But even the relationships with staff and other buildings and other situations, too, was amazing, so.
And then staff and student survey responses. We surveyed grades three and up. And staff took a survey, so there's a few, just with their feedback comments there. If you wanna take a minute to read them, I can read a few. The summer school is more laid back than regular school is. And it gives a lot of students time to socialize with friends while simultaneously increasing their skills. Teacher cadets also gave feedback. I had, which I'll wait to kind of say more, 18 teacher cadets. Last year, we had four. The feedback was very positive. They are already, what, is this gonna happen next year? We're excited. Can we do it? Can we do it even if we're not in school anymore and come back and work here? So that says a lot. I think they really enjoyed it and they loved planning and just building relationships with the kids as well. So there's the teacher cadets, a little group photo there. And Elizabeth was there, too. So she, yeah, she did, she did gardening and was with the littles in the morning, too, right? Or you older? Yeah, you were. Okay.
But the teacher cadets, too, I think just like last year, like Mrs. Schleyhuber said, we didn't have a lot of them. It was just so, it just added to the camp this year. Because like the students were able to get like that individualized attention that they may need. Like I know like in our group in the morning, we had like a non-reader and like we were actually like middle school readers and writers. So the little gentleman wanted to be read to every day. So like by having like Elizabeth in the class with me, too, it just helped out. And like the students view the cadets as teachers, too, as equal partners. So it was amazing.
So with credit recovery, this is my third year of doing this. The students can enroll in credit recovery. They, the Sabo sends letters out to them at the end of the year, students who need to recover credits. And it's all through Edgenuity, so it's all online. This year, we only had 62 students, which is lower enrollment. And it wasn't, when talking with Sabo, it wasn't because they weren't interested. We just didn't have as many students needing them, which was a really positive thing. Of those 62 students, only 25 of them needed a course for credit recovery, to recover. I have updated numbers. So as of Saturday, 46 credits have been earned or recovered. 34 students earned one credit, 27 students earned two credits, and I even had one student finish three credits. So it was getting them back on track to graduate. As of right now, the students have until this Friday, August 16th, to finish. Mrs. Sabo is back, so the students, she's been taking over things. And then Mr. Osborne will be here Wednesday. So then he'll take over the counseling, setting my asset of it. And then I think there's one more. Yes. So like I said, the Sabo sends out the letters. The students and parents have to sign an agreement form. This year, it was new that if they did not complete the course, since the district pays for the course, they will have to reimburse the district. As of right now, all students are on track to finish their course with a little bit of help here and there. I, my responsibility is two to three times a week, I send out emails to the kids and to the parents to say, hey, this is where your progress is, this is what's going on. Keep working, great job, I'll commend you to help. And then twice a week, I came into the high school and hosted open lab times where the students could come in and get help. They also had to come in to take their final assessment in person. It was on the computer, but supervised family and staff assessment here with me. At the beginning of the summer, I did a Tuesday morning and a Thursday evening. And then as things went on, the evenings were more popular. So I did just Tuesdays and Thursday evenings. There were a couple of students who worked and couldn't. So there were a couple Saturdays I kicked in for them to be able to come in and take their assessments so that they have the opportunity to learn their course. And I had a lot of students come in.
I was gonna say, well, it was your average.
It was. I sent my spreadsheet over there. But I, well, they all had to come in to take their assessment. But I did have a handful of students that would come once a week here and there. And that wasn't necessarily that they needed help. They just needed that quiet space to focus. And so they would come in and just work for a couple hours, get some work done, and then that way they could keep their progress up. So it worked out really well this year with that. I made sure, in the past, I haven't always included parents in the emails to students. And then parents didn't really know what was going on. So this year, any email I sent out was also into a parent so that they knew exactly where their student was, what was going on, the expectations.
Thank you for that. That effort there is huge.
I was just impressed with how many credits compared to in the past. We've had, I've had, I think my first year was almost 100 students. And it wasn't anywhere near the amount of credits that were earned. So just, I think part of the motivation was knowing that if they didn't finish, they were gonna be responsible for something. But also just they're taking responsibility. And they were thankful to have someone that they knew because a lot of the students were ones that I've had in those schools. So it was someone they knew reaching out to them, saying, hey, what can I do? There was a lot of positive feedback.
Plus that constant feedback.
Yes. Two to three weeks of setting those...
I was just gonna say, that puts them on task, like someone's basically monitoring them.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions?
I would just leave it with these two ladies here did a phenomenal job. There was not ever an issue that they didn't have, that they could not handle. And just their relationship, not only other staff members, but with the kids, really makes this a successful program. And you, Mrs. Clausen, I know you did a lot of the prime with Mrs. Schley.
Thank you. And the reality is, guys, it's talked about, all the owners.
Yeah.
Parents talking about the camps that their kids went to, people that don't go to Richmond and you know, their districts don't have this kind of... It's a huge thing. And you continue to make it happen every year that we're doing it, so it's great.
Applause to them.
What's that?
Applause goes to them, too. A lot goes into it.
Absolutely. Let's go. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on our agenda, the 2024 Athletic Summer Camps. Mr. Trent?
Looks like mine's all washed up, too. Before I get going, because I don't know if they're gonna bounce or not, but I wanna give a shout out to Mrs. Cranton and Mrs. Schleyhuber as well. We'll talk, this was the second year we kind of partnered the athletic camps with the enrichment camps. And I think this year was the easiest one in terms of identifying, okay, what kids are coming over from an academic camp? Where are they gonna be? Who's gonna come over and get them? And each week, I would give Jessica that list. And it was boom, 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 these kids. And we were good. She even reminded me a couple of times. And then Mrs. Cranton. This year, my first two years as AD, we always get to the start of fall sports and we check eligibility from previous semester. We've got these things that pop up. Even though we tell the kids in every meeting and in the handbook, you know, you gotta pass all your classes or you gotta do credit recovery, that I think you know, this process. This year, I reached out to Mrs. Sabo and Mrs. Cranton. I said, hey, these are my kids that played fall sports last year, that failed the class. Can you let me know if they're enrolled in credit recovery so I can reach out to them? And I included the coaches on that conversation as well. And Mrs. Cranton and Mrs. Sabo did a great job of looping me in on some of those emails to keep me in the loop as to where kids were at, as well as keep the coaches in the loop to give them that little bit of extra motivation to get those done. Going through today and checking those, I see that a handful of those kids got their stuff done. So, so our athletic camps, year number two. These are our numbers by camp. And they tell a couple stories. Volleyball camp, football camp, numbers are up. Girls' basketball camp, our numbers were down this year, but I think a lot of that was because we only offered ones, one age group, instead of two like we did in the past. And you'll see when we get to the slide about the conversations I had with the coaches, how we're looking at with that. Wrestling, those numbers, this was the first year we didn't do a team camp here. So that came up in those conversations as well. Boys' basketball, again, one age group. And that also fell on the same weekend as baseball camp. So baseball, basketball, we lost a little bit of kids there. But the kids that were there, we got, we got great reviews. I always love posting the pictures of the girls' basketball camp because last year, Coach Shorman and Coach Holbuck were like, we're gonna get bright pink shirts for these kids. And they loved it. There's some pictures of the basketball camps. All of our middle school girls. Volleyball camp partners with their, does their middle school camp right after, they tie it in after their high school camp when Hillsdale College brings coaches and players in to run that camp for them. So those middle school kids get that experience with college coaches and college players. And they get a Hillsdale shirt that they get to wear at school a couple of days a week. I have to apologize to the parents and the kids of the boys' basketball camp because when I uploaded the pictures and in an effort to keep myself more organized, I cleared my phone and those pictures didn't upload. So that's, that one's on me. But we've got pictures of the wrestling camp with Coach Berg and with the football camp with Coach Misco. This picture down here in the corner are all of the high school football kids that came out and helped with the youth camp. It's, it was odd. I walked out there and you know, I've run youth stuff with football before to get a couple of kids here and there. And I went out there and it was, they had groups, they had kids, they had pads, they were throwing, the kids were running. They were having a good time. The last day, they got rained out, so they had to come inside and make the most of that using both gyms. So kids love the, I think the agility ladders might be the kids' favorite thing. Looking ahead, this was year two of rolling these camps in with the academic camps. Talking earlier, you know, smoothing it, smoothing up that process of getting the kids that are doing academic camps over to the athletic camps. I think we took a big step this year for that. A lot of my conversations with coaches were, what do you wanna get out of these camps? Do you wanna use it as a fundraiser? Do you wanna use it as community service for your kids? Do you wanna use it as a way to promote and build numbers in your program? And the answers were kind of across the board on those three things. So we talked about potential ideas. Again, none of these are set in stone, but talking points and things that we're looking to do in the future to build these programs, to get these kids exposed to our coaches and our facilities and get them excited to play sports when they get to the middle and high school level. So we talked about doing clinics with the Hometown Football League, formerly Taffel. Looking at, instead of just isolating ourselves to a couple of weeks in the summer, looking at different teams doing things in the fall and the winter and taking advantage of some of those weekends. And again, that was, that was the ones aimed at just getting kids interested in some of these sports and starting to build those numbers. We looked at, we had conversations about scheduling and looking at, okay, can we schedule a boys' camp outside and a girls' camp in the gym or vice versa so that we can get two camps going at the same time that aren't gonna pull kids from each other? Talked about improving the registration process and potentially exploring options to collect payments. We had a lot of parents that asked, can I pay online? Can I pay Venmo? And I'm like, oh, we don't have a way to do that yet. But again, conversations that can be had at a later date. We also looked at additional options for different grade levels. So looking at, do these teams, like using the volleyball model, wanna do a high school camp and then a middle school camp separate? And then maybe an elementary camp after that? And the last one, they're coordinating with high school team camps. So these are conversations I have had and plan to have with our coaches on, how do we build these programs up? Because I believe this level, this youth level in these camps can do huge things for building our high school programs and building participation. And they get to show off our facilities, so. Any questions?
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate you spending your summer. I know you have a baby on the way, so.
Just like to echo what Preston said, you know, our coaches do not get paid for this. This is the cost of the camps that they charge, their fundraiser money that goes to their program. They donate hours and hours of their time running these camps, setting them up, et cetera. And I don't think they see it. It's just something they just do, which we're very pleased and lucky to have in our district. To go back to the first camp, the Academic Enrichment Camp, that camp cost the district a little over $100 to run for a summer camp. And as you know, in the past, those were run through grants that we received. And those grand dollars are drying up. So we're gonna have to be... So we're going to have to be real creative on how we sustain those programs for the future.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the Ron Clark Academy. Mrs. Lawson?
My initial plan was to go there, so I'm going to start the presentation here and then I have some people who are going to join us. But a couple of months ago, actually it was in April, I believe, we had a group of teachers that were asked to go down and hear Ron Clark. And if you don't know Ron Clark, hopefully by the end of this presentation, you'll get a better understanding of him. But Ron Clark is, when I was in my early years of teaching, he was the, one of the people that I hoped at one time, at some point become like. He was a Disney teacher of the air and has been seen nationally. And when this group went to go hear him, at the end of the conference or the presentation, everybody at the facility received an all expense paid trip to go actually to the Ron Clark Academy in Atlanta, Georgia. And we had, at the time, we had five people who were eligible to go. Knowing what a big Ron Clark fan I am, our Huntington Bank, who was the sponsor that reached out and asked, is there any way I can get some more slots? And I reached out to them. So we were able to send 11 people from our district. Originally had 18 people going, but various commitments in the summer. And we left on July, or excuse me, yeah, July 7th, Sunday. Summer was very late in the evening, arrived about 2:00, 3:00 in the morning on Monday. And we came back on Tuesday the 9th. Summer was very late on Tuesday the 9th where we arrived back in Detroit around 3:00, 4:00 in the morning on Wednesday morning. But let me just give you a little snapshot of the Ron Clark Academy. The Ron Clark Academy is a highly acclaimed, a nonprofit school located southeast Atlanta. And it received national and international recognition. It's a school that serves four through eight students and represents a lot of socioeconomic and academic background diversity in communities across the region. The intent of Ron Clark is to, number one, it was founded about 17 years ago, but it has become a demonstration school in which for the past 16 years, over 100,000 superintendents, district level officials, teachers have participated in the actual academy. This is their vision and mission, their mission and vision statement, to deliver the highest quality educational experience where global citizens are born through engaging teaching methods, academic excellence, relationship building, and a passion, and a passionate climate and culture. Their vision is to be the best school in the world by demonstrating transformative methods and teaching that are embraced and replicated elsewhere. Ron Clark started his, his vision in schooling with one of his first books he ever wrote called The Essential Fifty-Five. And it's basically 55 rules. When you're a classroom teacher hearing that the first time, or really anybody, it's a lot of rules. But when you actually start looking at what these rules are, it's about how we should be treating each other from day one. It's about having respect for each other, it's about showing people dignity and, and working with those that need help and et cetera, bringing them up. I'm going to pause it and show you the video here.
If you're not going to prove this message, this is America's borders.
Sorry, getting commercials.
All students can be happy, classrooms can be energetic, schools can be fun.
The Ron Clark Academy is unlike any school in the world. It's a school that's full of passion, energy, color, and light. It's a school where we lift up our kids, we get them to feel good about themselves, we get them to realize their own potential.
The first time Mr. Clark jumped on the table, I was like, whoa, I was like, okay, what's going to happen next? Because I've never seen a teacher jump on a table. I mean, I'm not even allowed to practically jump on my bed when I get home.
May I have the humble, please? Ron Clark.
You saw a piece on the news about this school in Harlem, you didn't even know what school it was.
Right.
And you, white boy, got in your car and drove to New York City going, I'm with the Harlem next school.
Yes, sir.
My behavior wasn't so good from Mr. Clark. I was really bad.
Well, Mr. Clark, you're the only one that believes in me. That's when I just started. I just started reaching out and everything. And he just really reached, he just really touched my heart and I liked that.
Mr. Clark is indeed magical in every way possible.
Thirty-nine is really equal.
Ron Clark, who fell into teaching by accident, turned underachievers into high achievers in a Harlem classroom. And in the process, became an award-winning teacher, author, and even the subject of a made-for-TV movie.
You see this? This means that this year is going to be different.
Even better. It's not acceptable.
Now, Clark's used his book royalties to convert a warehouse that was in the United States, called The Rock Park Academy.
From the very first time I met him, I knew that he had something special going on.
The coolest part about our school is that not only are we affecting the lives of our students here, but we're also inviting thousands of educators from all over the country and around the world to come to our school each year, to sit in our classrooms, to interact with us, to learn about our methods and techniques here at the academy, and then to take those ideas back with them around the world. So this school that's in a 100-year-old factory is not only affecting the lives of our students, but we're affecting the lives of hundreds of thousands of kids all over the world every year. We're showing people that education should be about passion, high expectations, and shared relationships.
School is a place where I actually really been. Before at school, I was like, I gotta go to school tomorrow. But it's, to me, this school is like, I gotta go to school tomorrow. Yeah, I gotta go to school tomorrow. Yeah. They don't just act like they're having fun. They do have fun. They put, they pour their whole hearts out into every single lesson.
So these are some of our pictures. There was a group of us that went, as I said, that had an opportunity to actually meet with them and listen to them. What was fascinating about the facility, I mean, you look at the pictures and the images, there were hundreds of educators in this one event. I think, I think there was 800, 800 educators for these two days. All over the United States, Huntington Bank, and I do have to thank Huntington Bank because they were the ones that sponsored this. They have a commitment to the Ron Clark Academy for the next three years to get as many educators there as possible to at least experience it. They're focusing on the Detroit area, Philadelphia, Cincinnati, and Cleveland? I think Cleveland, yeah. But various areas. There were teachers from California, Nevada, all over the United States. When you look at the facilities, this is one of the atriums. And in the top, the dome is actually designed and created by the makers of the game of Thrones. They actually designed the graphics and all that for Ron Clark. The facility is truly unbelievable. But I think as you're going to hear from our team, it isn't about the physical facility. It's about what their mission and what their passion is in that building, which can happen in any school district. The title of the conference was Ignite the Classroom. Oftentimes, we saw many students showcasing their talents, whether it's to dance, whether it's to music, singing, competitions, et cetera. Ron Clark, as well as his staff, spent a lot of time with us just explaining the why, why they did certain things. This is that old warehouse, that 100-year-old warehouse that they've transformed into an academy. This is probably, I don't even know who this lady is, but that's probably the sense of the whole week, two days, as you just stood in this particular room. I believe this is where you were going into the math classroom. And the doors opened up like, and this theme of Star Wars played, and there's murals all over. They have a built-in now auditorium that they do a lot for training, but also their, their own, their team efforts here. This is the English classroom. You can see down on the bottom where the student desk guard. And then across the back, because it is a demonstration school, that's where the educators would come in and go in and go out of the classroom. These are students that attend Ron Clark. They're there, part of their summer is they're in school. And so they had teaching going on exactly like they would at, it was a regular school. This is the, the science room. I think this was the science room. You see on the side, they have a seating for the observation and students in the center. Again, you can see, it's a little untraditional, teachers and students standing on desks, et cetera. And I think you're going to hear some of the things that they walk away with and so forth. Again, there's one of the other teachers, you can see the murals in the background. There's one of our teachers that went down the slide, Elena Hunter. Again, Mrs. LeRoy in there, she got pen to achieve that. One of the things they do in the academy is they have a house system where every student, when they first start in the Ron Clark Academy, a lot gets to choose which, or they spin a wheel and they have one of the four houses that they have. In front of you is the book, Kim Bearden, is one of the co-founders of the Ron Clark Academy. That's the book she just recently released to help people understand the house system. If you're familiar with Harry Potter, anything like that, it's a similar concept. The last slide I have here before I bring up our, our teachers is, if you look on the walls of this academy, there were never, there's never any work of the student. It's about pictures of the family that's created there. And floor to ceiling, top to bottom, it's covered with student pictures and activities, parents. It's just, it's a remarkable, a remarkable academy. And ironically, until I had the opportunity to go with my son who lives in Atlanta, he literally is five minutes away from the Ron Clark. So I have been there multiple times in Atlanta, never knew this existed. Not in the best of neighborhoods, but with them. So here tonight, you guys want to come on up? And I'm going to come over there and join you. I'm going to let them, have them introduce themselves and tell them kind of what their takeaways were.
Hi, I'm Stacy Jovanowski. I teach third grade. There was five of us from the elementary that went and some were a little bummed that they couldn't come and see you guys and talk about it today. So I kind of tried to summarize a little bit about what we would all say. And then these guys are going to back, back it up. Sorry about reading from my phone, but I'm camping right now, so this was my type. This summer, Richmond and Mr. Walsley gave us the opportunity to attend a two-day seminar called Ignite the Classroom at the Ron Clark Academy in Georgia. It was an incredible opportunity that we got to see a demonstration school that prioritizes, he said, student engagement, academic excellence, relationships, climate, and culture. Ignite the Classroom was literally an experience. And to get the full effect, it's something that you have to feel. And man, did we feel it. We felt it the second we walked onto the property of the Ron Clark Academy. We felt it when we walked through the entrance and were greeted by a contagious, positive, and confident energy. And when we viewed the school decor that prioritized family. We felt it when we were invited to participate in workshops, as well as observe amazing instruction by teachers who prioritize and believe in the same principles that the academy was founded upon. And we felt it when we observed confident students in very mature student discourse, providing and receiving feedback to each other during their classroom discussions. And then we definitely felt it when the students confidently walked up to us and invited us to have lunch with them and hear about the school from their point of view. Two of the biggest personal takeaways that I had were, one, that the students at Ron Clark Academy were extremely confident speakers. It was like mind-blowing to me. They also presented confidently and they had amazing communication skills with not just students, but also with adults and staff and strangers. They communicated beyond their ears. And two, the Ron Clark Academy is a family. And every initiative that the staff or the parents or the students participated in started with that family. So they didn't do anything if it wasn't going to improve their family. So many of the things that we learned about at this demo school can be read about on Facebook groups or websites or in all the books that the staff have written. But seriously, does the feeling that you get walking in there that reignites teachers when they visit? And it's exciting to us as we embark on another school year. Myself, as a veteran teacher, I've attended a lot of professional development in media centers of gyms in various schools. And I've done my best to understand the priorities and purposes of each of them. But actually going and feeling it was a totally different experience. And I'm super excited to implement a couple of things this year. One of them, I'm committed to making it as possible, or to the best of my possibilities, to, to also create kids who are that confident in speaking to each other. I think that would be really cool in third grade. And then also increase the effectiveness of the culture of my classroom, which has always been a priority, but this kind of just reignited a lot of things. And to be able to use some of their ideas will be amazing. So thank you so much, Mr. Walsley, for sending us. We really appreciate it. And we really hope that with the support of everybody, that maybe more of our teachers could go soon.
All right. So I am Eric Stevenson. I'm a kindergarten teacher here in Richmond. Mrs. Jovanowski did a great job of summarizing the others. I just want to point out the three things that really stood out to me. One, obviously she talked about the atmosphere. It's just fun to be there. It was honestly contagious. I wanted to stay longer. I was shut down. But that's just the kind of atmosphere that they've built there. And it's not just one person. It's every single person. Like I said, it's contagious. You just want to be a part of it. You want to be out there singing and dancing along with these students and these teachers. It's just, it made everything so much more fun. Mrs. Jovanowski also talked about the confidence and the communication skills of these students. You know, we'd ask them a question and we would never get a one-word answer. They're really well thought out. Everything was in a complete sentence. And then they'd always ask a question back and you had to stop and think about it. It wasn't just something you could just rattle off and answer. You're like, wow, that's a really deep question that you just asked. And it's something you don't think about that, you know, a lot of these, some kids are missing these communication skills and they've got it loads. And the last thing I want to talk about is there is a lot going on at this. I mean, obviously you saw the ceiling is literally dragons flying around. But you know, they constantly kept saying the magic was not in the dragons. And so many things that they were doing at this school are very tangible, things that we can be doing here. Because that was something I was very skeptical about when I went here. I was thinking, well, how much can we really do in Richmond? But then you watch them teach and you watch their lessons, you think, well, why can't I do that? There's nothing that they're doing that's just, you know, this crazy thing that can't be done in any classroom anywhere. So I mean, that's the big thing I want to build upon is just trying to make it more fun, those communication skills, remembering that, you know, you don't have to have flying dragons to build this amazing classroom. Thank you.
I'm Amy Zizelman. I'm second grade at Lee. Like they all said, it's a feeling. We went and we learned, even me, looking at everyone, they told us, you know, we're not looking down, we're looking up. We're making eye contact. We want to teach our students that. They have thought. I am by nature shy until I get to know you. And I was there and I was dancing and I was sitting with the kids, things that I don't do, but I felt like part of the team. And so I want to make sure that we bring it back, that every kid has that comfortability. Because even when they're shy, if, if they feel like they have a team, so thinking about the house system. At first I thought, hmm, Harry Potter. I don't like anything to do with that. I didn't enjoy it. So I went in a little sketchical, had my guards up. But I was able to see this community that they built. You know, we have sports and everyone has a team. I have three kids. They all have a sports team. They have those sports friends. They have their school friends. But what about the kids who don't? Well, that was me, right? I was the kid who didn't have that. But at Ron Clark, and I see her go as a bendee, our green shirt, right away we became part of that team. So we could look around the room and see that person has my back, they have my back. We're a family. But then we also had like our cousins and our aunts and our uncles. So this big family. So this big family broke it down into little families, so that's something that I would like to rebrand. The confidence of the students was mind-blowing. They felt confident because they felt the confidence that the teachers brought to them. They were loved. They could make mistakes, they could be silly and goofy, I loved the standing on the desk. I told them, I was like, oh, I would do that, right? I would do anything to get them to wanna come to school. I want kids to want to be there, I wanted to be there, I wanted to be there every second. We came home, we were in tears, it was life-changing. So I'm hoping more, more people get to go, 'cause we can tell you, and we can show you in our videos and our group texts, and all the things that we have experienced, but you have to feel it. And we wanna bring that back. We don't need the dragons, we don't need all the extra, we don't need our classrooms to look like that, but we need the community, and we need the kids to feel the love that we felt.
So I also went, there were six of us from the middle school, five teachers and Miss Morella, and we have been at the same thing, just the social skills, like the eye contact, the turning to look at the speaker, making sure if you are the speaker, you're rotating to make sure everyone is included. They have competitions throughout with working on handshakes, answering interview questions, and then from the middle school level, I'm preparing them for high school and beyond. Those are skills that they need, that a lot of, right now, some are struggling with. So just those things. And then one thing that the church and I both want to do is, all the teachers had stages, like just mini-stages up in the front of their room, so that they could be visible for those kids. And so we are in the process of building stages, just like pallet stages, nothing crazy, so that we can be able to see, 'cause our most, like, for me, well, for my middle school students, some of them are taller than me, and I need to be able to see them as much as they need to be able to see me, so that isn't something that, you know, we're not supposed to be seeing.
I don't want you to walk away here tonight saying, we don't have good things going on in Richmond, because we have phenomenal things. But I had the pleasure of spending two days, and I say it was exhausting, we got in to the hotel about two in the morning on Monday, we were back up at 7:00 AM, heading to the academy, we were there till, I don't know, 10:00 that night, and back up at 7:00 the next morning. We had that delay in our airline with weather and so forth, so some of us didn't get in at four in the morning on Wednesday and so forth, but from the time we were there until the time we left, this group was doing nothing but trying to figure out how we could do this enrichment, and get their colleagues on board and understanding. I had the pleasure of just kinda sitting back and watching them, and I am so proud of what they did and how they looked at this. I had the Ron Clark image of what he was, in my view, and when I saw the video of the home, I got it, except ourselves up for failure, because they're gonna walk into this facility, and I just can't provide that. There, and you're talking millions of dollars have come pumped into this academy. But as you heard him, it's not about the physical nature, it goes back to the relationships teachers have with kids, and exciting activities. Every teacher, and they all, they all echoed it, was very intentional, from the time those students get, got there till the time they left, in what they did, from their transition activities to the use of activities. I went into the math class with Ron Clark, I don't know if you guys knew that one, where he taught the whole lesson using sign language and handcuffs, because his, so kids are so distracted by the adults coming in and out, that he was able to teach that, and they were unbelievable, these kids were, they learned it, they had all their clues. There is a lot of dancing, a lot of songs, and I know they, they have a lot planned for this year, what they wanna do, hopefully, and they still gonna work on, so. And your, the furniture budget that you put in them, we're replacing kindergarten furniture, they're getting tables, so that they can, you're barely creative on your tables in kindergarten, but it just is, was inspiring as a superintendent to see your teachers who are probably, we have some of the best of the best in our district, to be that, but that energized to go, and I can't wait to hopefully have more teachers experience this next summer, so. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
When Mr. Wamsley shared this with me, it sort of makes you wanna come back to teaching. How did you get to be a student at this?
It is a, there's 400 students that they have in the school, four grades, they have thousands of applications, everyone is individually looked at, they do home visits. The mission of the organization is that eighty percent of the students must be in at-risk criteria, that everything is, everything statistically is working against the child. And so basically what his academy is showing is, it isn't about where your background's from, it is about what you have available to you, it's about the environment and the educational experience that you provide.
Amy, can I have a question? Okay, our next item on our agenda is our 24-25 student parent panel.
So I'll ask the board, you want me to just go through the pages and highlight the changes?
Yep.
Yeah, after each section, we can ask questions, if we have questions, right? Sounds good.
Scroll through. The first part are just name changes, and updates for the school year, position changes, et cetera. Table of contents will get changed once we take out the straight-through language, et cetera, so we get into the content here. First change comes, early dismissal for ill students. Basically, it's kind of clarifying questions, office personnel, contact, parents regarding the illness accord, or, we do that now, so it's like the clarifying. To provide support for students as possible, students are encouraged not to use their cellphone. Reason or logic behind that, when a student calls from a cellphone, we don't know they're sick or where they're in the building, so trying to get students to come to the office or to report, so that they can follow, because it could be, it could be serious. Return to school after you're sick, it's always been a 24-hour rule, we include the diarrhea in that 24-hour rule. Urgency closings, delays in procedure, just uses, instead of using specifically school master rooms, we don't have anymore, just whatever our automated notification system Enrolling in school, a student who's suspended, expelled by another public school system may be temporarily denied admissions to the school district during the period of suspension or expulsion, even if the student would have otherwise been entitled to send them to school. Basically what this is saying is, if someone's been expelled in another school district, they need to finish that expulsion before we start them here. Also, in the enrollment process for suspensions, those are looked at particularly with our school of choice population, we'll get the difference. If there is a denial, because we can't, we can't be in open enrollment, open school district, we can't deny without a hearing, so they can at least, we can understand what their reason is for. Meal charging policy, the old policy has been removed, this provides the new policy with our free breakfast and lunch for all students, that is part of the state budget. Basically what it's saying is that every student, we're still gonna collect free reduced lunch applications, oftentimes we have to receive, fill out education benefit forms for family. You can purchase the alacard items through the, mostly the middle school and high school. If there are allergies, there's a form that we use, document the allergies from the doctor's office, especially if we have to create alternate meals for students with allergies. Second one, just general, we're gonna provide participation in the breakfast and lunch program, and just lunchtime expectations, again, just updating with, in alignment with the national breakfast and lunch programs, and the state requirements for free lunches and breakfasts.
Nice question. Lunchroom expectations, students should remain seated unless dismissed, so like in my high school, I can't go talk to my friend at another table, what does that mean?
They typically sit at the table that they choose to sit in, because of the timeframe and getting the number of kids, and then usually when the bell rings, or Miss Abo in the high school, then the bell rings, they leave the table. But usually it's where they're sitting. There's not a lot of space in that lunchroom when you have about 200 kids eating lunch in that egg, we don't do two lunches now in high school, and so moving around becomes very tight in that area, especially when people are carrying lunches. So they typically just sit at the table where they're at. So it's, there's not assigned seating, they can sit wherever they want.
So I can't get up and go talk to my friend? Is what you're saying?
Correct, you can sit there.
Generally, that's, that's.
Initially, to talk to them, but then that's it.
Going back to all households need to complete the educational benefits form?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The all households need to complete the education benefits form? This report is critical and sorry, can some, can they act out that this?
There's nothing, there's nothing that requires them to fill out for the educational benefits, but if they're, if they, if they get federal benefits, there's certain forms that have to be filled out. For instance, our free reduced lunch application, even though they're getting a free meal through the state, has significantly dropped, which has affected our title funding, because it's all based on your free reduced lunch application.
So that's why they strongly encourage?
So they just go, and they're traveling, they're not going to pay the money?
Pardon?
And the child would be, go through the lunch line, right?
No, they all, they all get a lunch, regardless of whether I qualify officially under the federal national breakfast and lunch program, everybody's getting a lunch. But if they qualify, the district submits that, if you're an eligible free lunch student or reduced lunch student, the district submits that reimbursement to get a certain dollar value back from the federal government, where if they, if you don't have that, then we're getting the reimbursement back from the state, and they're two different dollar. But that free reduced lunch application is what drives your title $1, your title $2 allocation from the state. So the fewer that we count, it shows that our free or reduced lunch is less than what it actually is, which means that we get less of the dollars. But there's nothing that, you know, if someone's currently receiving benefits, they have to maintain those benefits by meeting whatever requirements are for the benefits, which could be the free reduced lunch application. But there's nothing that requires someone to fill that out. Just clarifying on the elementary, we don't do placements based on friend request at the elementary school. We do it trying to balance class sizes, trying to balance behavior issues, academic issues, this is just putting in writing, that if you're gonna request, and we try to honor to the best of our ability, but it, if you think of it the story this way, if it's first grade, these students don't get along, I need these two students to be separated, these two. Second grade, I might be able to do it again, by third grade, though, at some point, they're gonna interact again, so we look at for, make sure we have, our academics are balanced in the classroom, if there are behavior issues, IEPs, special education, that it's balanced, and there's no guarantee, it's just putting in writing that, there's no guarantee, but The next part under the student well-being section, again, just a reminder, anything in blue underline is new, anything red striked is being removed, anything that's black is currently in the policy. But we've added okay-to-say as an option for students and families, and different ways you can report, should you need to report in a system. Hall passes, we use the electronic hall pass in the system, it was very successful, we've actually reduced, increased the number of instructional time for kids by reducing the amount of out-of-class time they had. We do have some kids that are still out of class a lot, every hour there, choosing to go to the bathroom or whatever, which is, we're not gonna deny a student a bathroom, but it's looking at that, trying to figure out what the root cause is, but we do utilize the electronic hall pass system.
So just, you're taking your laptop with you, you have to go there, where do you go?
No, what it does is, no.
I'm sorry, that's a silly question.
No, it's a genuine question. Basically, that in the very simplest form, if I, if I need to use the bathroom, I can either send it to my teacher, and it will say, yes, I can go, or it might be a hold, because we have, sometimes we have kids that can't be in the same area at the same time in behavior. If I know that student A is out, student B might have to wait till student A returns to class. It allows counselors to send passes to students, or students to send, hey, I need to see the counselor. The teacher gets notified, so the paperwork or the logistics side, we're trying to get that out of the vein of instruction, keep the instruction, but they don't have to stick it back.
So I have a question. So in that system, if, do all of them link up then? So like, if you have a teacher in classroom A, and a teacher in classroom B, and, I don't know, Jimmy and Tommy don't get along, or they do, and they tend to get in trouble with each other, and one's in each classroom, do they know that they're both out in the hallway? Or that?
The teachers, just, depending how you set it up, the teachers may not know that specifically.
Okay.
But it may say Johnny wants to use, go to his locker, and say, you're on hold for 10 minutes, because Joey might be back in class, or should be back in class by that time, so then it releases Johnny out. None of the kids know that?
Right.
But it can be set up, so if there's a constant behavior issue that they don't, we can set it up so that these two students during passing, or during classes are not in the hallway at the same time.
So there's another safety.
And what we found in the year is, the amount of out, out of class, I think I remember the old way, the teacher would write a pass, send it, teacher's teaching, 10 minutes later, Mark is not back in class, where this will then know how long that student's been out, so you can address the issue, where it's at. You would say you're going to locker, and it's been 30 minutes. For some kids, we have been able to significantly reduce their out-of-class time. Testing out, clarified the language, because we, if no integrity test, then we went to Richmond, we kinda offered, these are our options, because there are some cases that it might be better to use an integrity final exam for test out, or Richmond High School. As referenced in here, you see throughout Superintendent Designee, in this particular case, this Miss Abo, this is more of the Designee. References to school guidance counselor, official name, we're using K-12 school counseling counselors, so there's some changes to that. Summit of retakes are available to all students, with the exception of AP classes, there's nothing preventing us from doing that, so we're offering it to all students, just to allow AP classes to also have that retake.
I have a problem with that. My reasoning is not AP classes, college-level coursework?
Yes.
Okay, so if the answer is yes, are they, and this may be happening out there, are they allowing retakes in college? And if they're not, why are we doing it?
I think that probably depends on the school, the college.
I don't know, that's why I was wondering, I mean, things may have changed, I don't know. But I don't know if, I just have an issue just because of, we're supposed to be preparing them for college, if, if that practice is not happening in colleges, and I don't know that answer, and I don't know how we could find that out, I don't think we should be allowing them to retest, and that's just my opinion.
Well, I mean, I know said the question to Mr. Wamsley earlier, and it was related to that, and I actually expanded it to consider, should, should classes at the 12th grade year offer that or not? Not just AP, but should there be some classes that don't offer that as a way to do what you just talked about, Mrs. DeShawn, the idea that, are we not preparing? Are, how, how do, how do you make that transition then, exactly, as a freshman at college, to say, I don't get this opportunity? to say, I don't get this opportunity anymore? Wait a minute. When it's just been a part of who you are for so many years, and freshman year is hard enough to get used to anyway, right? So I just think it, it feels like it's something that needs to be talked about further.
I will follow up with the team.
Thank you.
The grading periods, in terms of when report cards and power supports are given, we do more of a clarify defining elementary, middle, and high school. A high school receives their grades, they have power school for quarter one, quarter two, and if necessary, we do print copies for families. Semester one and semester two report cards that we nailed home is at that point, we are issuing some point, some point, some value of credit that we're issuing to students. So that will be the official. If we have an issue, they necessarily have quarter one, quarter two. Just talked about academic misconduct. It gives some discretion that instead of it just being a zero, it could be a reduction in work based on a variety of factors. It looks at putting some of the restorative practices, but the teachers find out what would be a way to fix this before we actually start taking away credit. Subsequent, subsequent offenses would then be listed as formal or informal, depending on the level of the academic misconduct. Graduation section. This is just basically cleaning up the educational planning, which you do. It's just following state or federal law for students who might be exempt from graduation exemption. Taking out the class of 2024 as those are no longer credits, we're now in the class of 2025. These are the credits that have to be earned. We cleaned up some of the languages to reflect the new policies such as personal finance up against the class of 2028. Forty hours of community service. If you recall during COVID, we reduced that, incorporated it. We're now at a point where we're back to getting 40 hours of community service. So that language can be improved.
How does that affect the students that are grandfathered in that were...
With the incoming class, you're now at, you're now 21, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25. So if class coming in, freshmen, so they would have, they would not have had any, appropriated them up. And change from guidance council office to guidance office, council counseling. Recognition at the high school, we do highest honors summa cum laude, great honors, we clean up some of the GPAs that fell within that range based on standards for summa, magna, and cum laude. Content awards, we often call them department awards. There are more content areas are defined by the building staff and criteria. We had to change some of the colors or update some of the colors to match. These individuals performing arts by combining man and art, the standards that are out there. Beyond some of this, some cords, we simply can't get certain colors anymore. So we had to kind of reset and figure out what colors we could get for the cords. Moving languages, NHS gets a stole. We no longer, we haven't given the gold cord. They get a stole, robotics, it's a blue cord. The honors of recognition is based on criteria established by the school and not an outside agency or operation. The intent of our convocation award ceremony is to recognize students that receive or meet our academic or standards that we set. We've been getting a lot of requests or requests from students who received outside awards or outside of the school that want to wear it. This is clarified. This is the point of the convocation, is for what you earned, which addresses those outside agencies. For the high school dances, this is some, looking at the policy and trying to clear up, to try out our goal is to get students to school and not take these as days off. As you noticed in some of our attendance data, some classes are, have a very poor attendance rate. If you're a kindergarten parent out there, please, please bring your child to school. They are the worst offenders for attendance rates. Attending, in some cases, on average, a third of your school year is missed by attendance. But in this particular case, the change is that on dance days of school, students must be in attendance for at least three periods of the day. Originally, we, it was just talked about that you need to attend school. Hearing some of the concerns that students have, and I'll just use a prom example, maybe they had a prom night and they were getting hair and makeup and nails done, and there's only so many people around the area, and your time slot is only a morning time slot or a noon time slot, at least giving a partial day attendance to be in class. So that's kind of the logic behind it. This is regarding hats, clarifying hats, as long as the face is visible. Students may, hats may be worn. So as long as the face is visible, that's just more of a, if you heard in the Ryan Clark presentation, body language and understanding meaning, if you read, the body language is critical. If some, you can say a lot about some, if they're looking at it, you can't see it.
Are we going to be assured that that's actually going to happen this year?
We'll try and.
We're willing that it didn't, and we never got an answer as to why it didn't. So am I to assume that all three buildings are going to follow this?
I will, I will tell them that the hats aren't to be worn as long as the face is visible. Hats may be worn, not required. Informal offenses, inappropriate behavior. We added the description of horseplay. Oftentimes kids, they would just horseplay. It's an inappropriate behavior for a situation. So just clarifying that. Horseplay is can be very vague, but generally kids know of horseplay. Establishers, a fifth and subsequent offenses come to the superintendent for long-term suspension or recommendation for expulsion. I don't know whether it doesn't say a recommendation, but their word recommendation should be in there because I don't have the authority to expel.
That's what I was, I had to note to that.
So I am age 54, so I guess.
I was going to ask what happens. I was like, oh, you mean we know what happened?
No, no, you, you guys, you guys only have the authorities. But I can go up to 59 days, and after that, it's, it's your decision. So defenses. A couple of those we've already approved from previous policies or previous reviews in the year. The student lockers require a student provided login. Student must provide the combination or key to the superintendent designee. That's just a safety if you ever have to get into a locker. It's usually the staff person that is the person that would have that master list of combinations. This is clarifying to be eligible in after-school and evening extra curricular activities. And examples are such as athletic band, drama, libria, etc. ETO sponsored events, robotics. Student must be in attendance for school that day. Dances was taken out because it was addressed separately under the dance section of the policy. And what this is, is trying to, you know, if you're not well enough or be able to come to school, you probably shouldn't be at these events. He's going to all the definitions of the, there are some things, just, you know, like theft, stealing from school, fraud was left out previously, just fixing up. This is the cell phone policy. First one is a warning. Second one's a parent contact. Third one might be disciplinary action up to suspension. You still have the red, yellows, and green zones, which allow staff to determine whether they're going to allow cell phones in the classroom. There are, the red zones are still a stake, there has to be no cell phone, locker rooms, bathrooms, et cetera. In general, elementary schools do not, this is more of a high school policy. You see that the middle school is up there. If they have, they keep in their backpacks or locker. Really, it's more of a high school policy as students typically have cell phones on their possession. Tardy policy. If you recall last year, at the beginning of last year, we, we, if you were tardy 10 minutes from class, it was marked as an absence even though you were in class. What we do is we code it as what's called a T-10, so we distinguish a true absence from the, a tardy. Obviously, if kids are in school and there's a tardy, they're still learning, they're just late. We're trying to find out what the cause of that tardy was.
For first hour? I like the first time. You're trying to figure out the cause of that?
Well, I know the cause of that. But if you're, if you're late second hour or the third hour or the fourth hour, it may be too socializing in the locker. So this is actually how, because we can run a lot of reports to power school to actually start targeting. What we found is some of our kids who are struggling in classes, it can tie back to this. We're trying to figure out why are they, because oftentimes if you're missing the first ten minutes, you can be behind or on that way in class if you missed out on the directions. Transportation, section five, just updates the transportation. We have options for parents on here comes the bus, to allow them to, we have about half of our organization that utilizes this. Here comes the bus, to allow them to either identify when their child actually gets on the bus or when their child gets off the bus for within a mile. Bus conduct. Change in this section, basically a warning system, a loss of privileges for three, 10, and up to the remaining school year for the fourth. We don't often get to that last one, but we have. And it's really just, there is one bus driver for the number of students on the bus. It is a safety issue. That's it. Those are the changes for the 23, 24 handbook. Tracy had some questions. I did give her the answers this morning, but some was clarifying language to match policy with what we currently have in the handbook. Generally, the way the handbook is written, you guys don't have this copy, but there are versions of this handbook that I have that we kind of have behind the scene. There are certain things that we need to have in the handbook that are mentioned in our policy that we color-code as an organization because it matches our policy. So if we're going to change it, we got to make sure the policy aligns. Some of the policies that are referenced haven't yet been, or they've been aligned or being recommended to be aligned, but aren't yet referenced in the handbook until we approve them. Retake, you had mentioned that. Bus routes, one of the questions was, do kids, do they have to cross the roads? In, only on backroads and subdivision, could a student have to cross a road to get to a bus stop? On backroads, it's more driveway stops. But if it's on the main road, we usually have two stops, one on each side of the road. We only do the right-hand pickup because of the bus. References, district parking lot traffic patterns. Parents will get that in their welcome back packet of maps. So just reminded, which way the traffic flows. Pack your patience, parents. The first day of school's coming, it's always a lot of cars. So just pack your patience, please. That's it.
So this will be the, the handbook, like the, the next sign? This will all be in...
So what will happen, what will happen next is I will take the strike-through language out, put a clean copy for the board to approve on the 26th, and then that will be the handbook that is issued. It goes on the website. They'll be emailed without the parents. I hear the copy of the handbook that's been approved. So they have a digital copy.
Very much. Our next item on our agenda is our preschool parent handbook.
So as I was going through the many policies and reading other policies that aren't on the agenda tonight, it dawned on us looking at handbooks that we approve the parent handbook and approve student athlete handbook. But we have other handbooks out there that have never come to the board. So I asked Mr. Gibson and I, and over the summer, I worked on just formatting, language, but in, for you is the preschool handbook. Many of these are required that we have in writing by our licensing agencies, you know, just attendance policy withdrawals, emergency procedures. Nothing in this, other than we did some cleanup and we alphabetized thing. There's nothing new to this handbook than what we previously issued to parents. So I didn't get any questions on this. I knew we had a lot to read this, this port, really, and a lot to digest. But this is just the handbook that we give to all of our preschool families. And so I would be asking you to officially approve it at the next meeting. Again, that's, there's no strike-through language. We're not recommending changes. We did some formatting. That's probably the biggest thing, alphabetizing. I'll just have to make sure the positions are all correct on page.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? So that under accident and emergency care, where it says that if a child needs immediate attention, that school personnel will call 911 for the ambulance. And if, I'm assuming it means that if the parents are hurting and can't be reached, the school personnel will accompany that child?
Yes. If ever we call an ambulance and the parent can't come to the school to go with them, a school personnel goes with the child to the hospital till the parent can manage that.
So, so, you know, we don't want this to happen, however, if there were many children injured. Would we have the school personnel available to do that? Are you, does that make sense?
If it's a tragic event, probably not. It becomes a triage center either here at the school. If we have a, hypothetically, because that probably happened.
A tornado.
But we could pull, we would pull, tornado might be more of a triage station here to bring it. That probably, we would not have enough personnel to get students to go one-on-one to the hospital.
Well, we did talk about, does it make a difference at the hospital?
Yes. When we had our administrative retreat, there's multiple, we would, we referenced some other contexts, but we would divide up that there would be district personnel at the hospital to greet parents and help them kind of where they are, given the mindset they might be in.
Sure, sure. That's just one thing I thought of as I was reading. The other thing is under tornado, actually. The teacher will bring attendance, right? Once the children are sitting, they will be handed a book to place over their heads at next. That's what was happening when I was in preschool and kindergarten and first grade. And I'm just curious, is that really the best known practice at this point in that situation? Or do we not have enough maybe backrooms for them to go into where we know it's a better space for them to be in or something like that? I'm just curious.
The way our crisis management regimen, to talk about tornado, we try not to go east to west sitting because of the wind drafts that are created for tornadoes coming that way. But it is kind of the old school. But, um, it is kind of the old school method. I did it too.
I'm completely, I'm aware it's the old school.
The idea, the thought process of work with emergency man is trying to protect falling debris, whether it's bricks, whether it's ceiling tiles or something, and using that hard surface or these protected. It's not going to stop. Where if they have their hands, the most little guys in preschool, um, their hands won't even probably cover their head. But it is locking your, your hands over here covering and getting down to do a squatting position.
Okay. That was, that was it.
In our actual crisis management, we have a picture of a student of how to correctly sit, face, and walk.
All right. Face the wall. Tracy, that's something's changing. That's a problem.
Right, right, I know. But it just felt like, oh my goodness, that was, that was what I was doing when I was little.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on the preschool handbook? Okay. Next one is our childcare handbook.
Similar with licensing for childcare, there's a handbook. This is the actual handbook that we have utilized in the past. We did not spend a lot of time on this, just more bringing it as the first draft or the starting point for any future changes. But this is what the, um, many of these policies are the same as the preschool because they follow the same licensing guidelines. But the childcare handbook that we give to parents.
And was it just a formatting thing?
Yes.
Page, oh, I can't see a page. Sick policy. If you look at it, everything's indented but that section. It's just a formatting thing. I'm not a big fan.
Okay. Our next one is our student athletic code of conduct.
Uh, the student athletic conduct, uh, I'll say this has some changes. I'll pull it up so you can see it.
This one shouldn't be too much. Right, because, yeah, we went through, we did it, we went through the last one.
Yeah.
The main ones is we, the main issues is we had to clarify going into a seven-period day, we had to make some correction that we did not catch in the previous one. But when I look at the student athlete, and there was a missing problem, you started reading stuff there. Sixty-six percent of the classes goes five out of the seven classes becomes the criteria.
Right. They're on page seven. You don't look back. That highlighted, underlined, should be performed. That's a bad.
Oh, that's a bad. Page three. If you look at the second paragraph, it ends with student hyphen, and there's a big long line.
This is what Mr. Trent talked about with the credit recovery. That if passing sixty-six percent, they're current, or will be ineligible for the first 60 calendar days of the semester. So if they fail class, they have basically 60 days to get back to be eligible. Again, later on, it goes to the five and seven classes determined to be eligible for the MHSA regulation and handbook. For us students who have passed the 100% of their classes. Eligibility checks are done. We actually use Power School to run eligibility reports. And then Mr. Trent, or the secretary, sent that out to the coaches so that they know what students are eligible, defining what kind of greatest period eligible's are. Just kind of some language cleanup. Students who are ineligible may still travel to away events. Discussion with the coach. However, they will be, uh, they will not be dismissed early from the school for athletic events while academic ineligible. Concept behind this is we still want students to be part of the team because there is such a team atmosphere, but yet you have to be eligible to play.
I think there might, there might be a time limit to.
Maybe.
Yep, coach and or at. There aren't any changes in the next section of listed awards, but can I ask a question?
Good.
E, where it says that attendance at season banquet is required to receive your award. Is there a fee to attend a banquet, or is that covered by that particular support?
I can't say 100% if the student cannot pay at the expense. Look into that. There's oftentimes a fee for the parent. If they don't know what percentage of students are covered, I can probably find that out for you.
And again, this is a problem that, I kind of look. So if they don't go to the banquet, they don't get their award?
Well, it says unless you made arrangements with the coach or designated. So it has an exception. Shouldn't you get their award?
But I would say, how is that?
Oftentimes, a banquet is considered the culminating event of the season. And so intent is trying to get people to make sure they go to that banquet.
I get that, but if I can't, I'm not getting my award?
No, you've got to make arrangements with the coach.
I know, but I think that the coach just can't give me my award. Why do I have to make arrangements? If I, if I'm a kid for whatever reason can't get, and the coach just can't come, well, find me, or it's in my pocket, that, that's all I'm saying.
No, I get it, but I'm thinking that's what that means. You know?
I'm just asking.
Okay.
I guess I find it.
The intent here is that if you're not going to the banquet, there should be a conversation with the coach that you're not going to the banquet. So that the banquet, whoever's planning, whatever program they're presenting, whatever they're going to talk about, they know students A, B, and C are not going to be in the banquet. That would be to make arrangements with the coach.
So that's what that means?
That, that's the intent is to.
Not if I don't do it, I don't get my award.
Correct.
It's for planning purposes in the code of conduct.
We have, because it's part of the off-season programs in this code, or the, and the year banquet's in the, in this section, it's part of the program, the sports program.
It's part of the list of expectations, maybe. But I, I guess I... I'm just a concern maybe about that whole language that's used. And or, I know, I know, you know, student athletes have usually great relationships with their coaches. But if you have to pay to be able to go to the banquet, is there, are they feeling comfortable to share that as a reason why they wouldn't be there? How does it work? Because I would hate for someone to feel like they can't be there and then also not get an award. You know, it's like you're being doubly.
Hethalized.
Hethalized in a way that just doesn't feel good. So maybe it's the language that needs to be changed or something? I don't know. I don't know. Yeah. I mean, sorry, page nine.
Next session is student athletes attending a team-sponsored camp during the summer that is available to everybody by April 15 deadline. We use an event link for all of our emergency phone forums for sports. And just to find the team camps, defined camps, which are all for the team members and coaches to attend or use for functions, so far. It's more about getting the valid, um, physicals.
I think I remember when I was on the board before having these conversations then. But just, I, I just want to be clear. I struggle a little bit with the idea that student athletes are kind of being watched 365 days a year. In some ways, it feels different than the rest of the student population. Because I, I wonder about student rights, parent rights, and overreach in certain cases. And that concerns me, I guess. And I know that that's been a part of this policy and this language has been here for a lot of years. And, and I guess I just have to, I just want to say it out loud since we were reviewing. But I also am curious about section 10, right? Where it talks about, you do not want any of our students possessing, buying, selling anything that they shouldn't have, narcotics, alcohol, tobacco, any of those kinds of things, right? And that's 365 days a year. But I, I don't see any reference, and maybe, maybe in someplace else. I don't know. I'm new here. But like, for instance, if a student is participating in a religious activity that involves alcohol, 365 days a year, they're somehow being watched as a student athlete. Can they not participate in that? Or in some cultures, having alcohol at a Christmas dinner is a part of the culture. And so are they being watched 365 days a year even though Christmas happens when we're not together as school? So I'm just curious about if those situations will ever come up, how we handle them, what we do.
Well, and it's that conversation years ago that we had going through with this is the elevation of athletes, the image, what they present. We run conversations from years ago. Dress, you know, all that kind of stuff. So it is always that, the, the 365 of always, but then when you look in a regular student handbook, things might be a little different. And the conversation has always been, because athlete is elevated, I guess, the only word. You know, we had lots of those conversations. Tracy, I can share with you, at least during my time as president. We never had an issue with anything related to like, and I understand that we're meeting, having a Christmas dinner, having a drink, you know, because that is our family tradition. No, that never came up. That was the other one.
A religious, like a worship.
Right, right. That has, that has never, ever come up. What came up in the ones that I know that I had to handle usually involved the police.
Right, right.
So there was consequences.
Labor Day camping trips.
Labor Day camping trips. Sure, sure. That pictures came back showing students drinking. You know, where there's, it's not, it wasn't because of their culture.
Understood.
I will find, I will find that I believe in the handbook and I believe in policy too. There is an exception that the rule doesn't apply with religious. I think my word at, my word at.
In the regular student handbook, you're saying? I don't think it's there. I think it's.
Might be in the, it just might be in a policy.
But it will be thrown in there.
I'm, I'm just curious of the clarity of that.
You know, I'm not trying to give anybody great light to do something illegal. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just curious about.
There are some instances to consider, correct?
The big picture. But if there is some, something.
I will find it. I can't think of words off the top of my head.
Okay. Any other questions for our student athlete code of conduct? Our next conversation is budget.
In your board packet, you have summaries of the budget that was approved by the governor, legislators and the governor and signed into law. There are two documents that are in there. One is by the House Fiscal Agency District by District Impact. And I believe on your document, I know this is a small print, you're going to see one that's highlighted that shows Richmond right there, showing an overall impact. My point of showing this is each agency has a different calculation for how the governor's budget is going to impact schools. And you may ask, how can that be? We're asking the same question too. This one's showing 651, I think the other is 5, I think 5. So there's a difference. So what I asked Tammy to do is to put together the revenue section of our budget that you approved in June. So you'll see two columns. One is what you approved in June, and one is what we project to be the amendment in February, if not sooner, when we do that amendment. So the biggest change is going to be right, I'm going to point out this lineup item here. There is a $333,000 reduction in the per pupil allocation. We assume, like most districts of the state of Michigan, based on the governor, the Senate and the House budget at the time, that we would get at least a couple hundred dollars per pupil increase. That did not happen. Public schools received no increase in per pupil. So we originally planned 333,000. We need to back that out of the budget at this point. The other change in the fiscal is at-risk funding. We approved a budget showing increase because all three budgets had shown an increase. But when you look at that budget by budget analysis, um, they're not even exactly sure which, how much more. It's a little more of an increase than we expected, but the total increase is about $92,000 in at-risk funding. Just a reminder to the board. We did, it's increased.
Okay.
We took the lower of the two numbers. So we budgeted basically a $92,000 increase over what we had last year. Could be a little bit more if we go with a higher number. But just a reminder, at-risk is section 31A. It's very limited what we can use those dollars for. A lot of dollars to be as much flexibility for this board to determine we really needed the foundation. They did not. Uh, 61D, uh, CTE incentives. The House has us getting $623. That's not a mistake. $623 more.
Total.
Out of the 20, total, total, $623 more.
Okay.
Senate's calculation doesn't show anything.
It's not the total.
315M literacy supports, it's in the budget, but there's been no dollar that's been allocated what that impact would be. The UAAL rate change is probably the biggest. This is taking the percentage we pay for healthcare down to 10%. I think it's more than 16, down to 10%, which is a $606 increase in revenue. $606,000, excuse me, increase in revenue. This is not structural. It is one-time. The legislators would have to vote to continue this each year going forward. You see, the 3147E MIFsers is about a $37,000 increase. This is very convoluted, but basically the revenue, they base everything on last year's payroll. So what we paid in payroll costs is going to come down a little because of this dollar. It's not going to be as much, we gain, gain some dollars there. That, that helps. Anything with 147 dealing with retirement, it's a lot of times a shell game. This, I just want to go back. This $606,000 increase is what the governor is kind of using as her platform for promoting a per pupil increase, which is significant. But when you take into consideration the loss of this that we were planning, and the biggest one is this 31AA, which is our school safety. It's paying for our security officers in the building, our, our bus drivers that we have monitoring, walking the halls and checking to make sure buildings are secure, and our liaison officer, as well as a social worker, as well as a... worker, as well as a, some other stuff. They significantly cut 31A, mental health, school safety, to a tune of $340,000 that we've lost in revenue. There's a couple other things like bilingual, one has us getting, going, getting some more dollars, one doesn't. Fast food challenges, one senate has us getting some dollars, the House doesn't. Occasional expenses, the senate has, House has us getting, I should agree with this one, House has us getting 25,000, the senate has us, I should say, the House has us losing 25,000, and the senate has us increasing. They're not even consistent. So what we know at this point is if you add up the bottom line, the net total is we have $61,000 more in revenue than we did last year. Which doesn't even cover the 1% we give teachers for their retention, and all contracts and all that. I'm not asking the board, or recommending the board do anything at this moment, but just the impact, we are already using about $400,000 out of fund balance to, for expenses exceeding, it will go up based on this revenue unless the senate and House does something now before they recess in September, October. The biggest thing that we have is the school safety and the liaison officer. Right now, I do not have the funds to support that as is using the current budget that we have. My recommendation to the board would be let's stay the course until at least the end of September, when everybody goes away, I mean, the legislators and governor, they all go away to start campaigning and see if they do anything between now and when they recess, the legislature. And then at that point, either we can continue, we've got the full purpose of fund balance to buy your time, and now we spend the year on how to figure out how to right-size the organization, because it's not sustainable, these two pieces. Or if you want me to come back at the next meeting and make recommendations for reductions, but I would not recommend that. Because they could, they could in September pass something and do a fix, and there's a lot of push to get something on the per pupil, there's a lot of push to the mental health they, this, this board, every school district.
That's the safety.
The mental health, safety, that is combined now this year, it's not just called mental health, it's school safety and mental health. But this is where they combine it and they cut.
All right. Yes.
I guess my, my recommendation is we just hold forth, let's get schools started, see where the legislators actually recess, and then at that point, if we've got to adjust, we will be able to make payroll, we will be able to, you know, if our enrollment is more than what we projected, it, that will help us in the big picture. That would be my recommendation, but.
Am I right in the overall picture? GSRP per pupil did increase?
GSRP per pupil increased about $400 per pupil, and they, they intend to, the goal is to have tuition-free four-year-old preschool statewide. The challenge districts are having is number one, finding people.
Right.
And physical space.
Right, right.
But yes, GSRP increased, charter schools received a per pupil increase.
That's what I was going to ask then. So charter schools will be getting more per pupil, but we can't guarantee that we won't have more.
This number up here that we anticipated building in, we got zero, and they, they got an increase of, I want to say it was $400, and the calculation that they did was whatever this total, that's $606,000.
Yeah, we can't.
They used that number to say, okay, that's about a $400 increase per pupil, so they gave the per pupil charter because they don't have that cost.
Yeah, I was just going to say, they don't, they don't have to worry about that cost at all, right? So it ends up being a complete increase. Okay. Okay.
So again, as you can see on here, even the different agencies are calculating, they aren't even consistent on how they're calculating, so I don't feel comfortable making a recommendation to you because there are so many still inconsistencies on the numbers. And I think once we know our student count, we'll have a true or better understanding.
Isn't that what typically happens when you do this, the lesson, the job to do? Does this go around? Welcome to the stage.
I feel like they do as a lesson every year.
They do, but this is a stupid idea.
Well, to me, this one, what makes this one so bad is that it doesn't even match what they put out there, that they.
Any three.
And of the three of them, it's like, so what did they do when they went into this meeting where they determined the budget?
I can't imagine how other districts are that weren't as prepared, quite frankly, as we were here, I mean.
I will tell you this, if anybody's interested, you can go to the actual budget.
Is that what you gave us?
Yeah, I can give you this document. The back pages are oftentimes references, important spending, and every, I don't care if you're a Democrat, I don't care if you're a Republican, it's been in every budget since the state took control in 96 of the school ages. But the stuff in the back of this budget totals about $700 million, which could equate to if they were just giving us the per pupil.
Yeah.
Just a second. If you haven't, if you can't sleep tonight, you can sit there.
Real quick, the document, Brian, that you gave us that shows, I kind of assume it's a breakdown, it says executive, House, Senate, and conference.
Yes.
So that, the conference is the meeting that they all met?
Yeah, the conference is, when you look at this document, it will give you what the House originally said, and the executive, and the senate, the conference is kind of what the final budget came up.
So the executive would be, I was reading.
Executives are governors, and then the House and senate, and then the conference.
I was reading this right.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Want to move on? Okay, next, next item on our agenda is our Michigan Alliance for Student Opportunity Enrollment Projections, Mr. Paulsland.
The NACSE is a good problem to have in our district. Basically, the Michigan Alliance for School Opportunities, just have the three and three, I'm trying to think what they, what they call, they just recently changed the name, but basically they do enrollment projections for districts. As this board knows, when we went for the bond in 19, this is one of the requirements that the Treasury requires you to do, to see, are you asking for money from a community that's in line with what your enrollment is? Sometimes the district will ask for money, but their enrollment shows they have got a declining enrollment over time, so it doesn't make sense you're adding buildings if your enrollment's declining. So you have a couple documents here. One is the current summary for the 23-24 school year, you can see a breakdown of our K-12, pre-K through 12 enrollments, five-year projections, it's been a non-constant, the five-year projection gives us from 24-25, we're at 1666 FTEs, which is expected to be above 40 students up in this enrollment projection, to, in five years, to be 1817. They do, when they do this, there's a lot of data that we send them, no student data, just numbers, for the last 20 years, what has been our enrollment, for the last 20 years, what's been our school of choice. They look at what the housing market is in our area, any new developments, they look at the number of houses that have turned over and sold versus, you know, if a two-person was leaving, mom and dad were leaving because their kids have grown, and you got a four-person family coming in, they look at stuff like that, statistics, to see what are the trends in our area. And what you're going to see is their five-year average projection in Richmond shows that we should be up about 100, over 150 kids in the next five years. When you look at, there's multiple models that they use and the statistical analysis behind them, they no longer use just birth rates, I should say, birth and death rates, kind of a morbid thing to be talking about, but how many kids were born on a certain day or a certain year, and then they project out. Because our populations are so transient, people are not necessarily staying in the same area as long as they previously did, they also look at taking into consideration school of choice, they look at programming, they look at, again, the stuff that we sent was a hard number, but they also look, take into all that into consideration. So the documents that, like I said, you have, it gives you the enrollment projection, it gives a little background of their services, kind of how they, there's the actual report, kind of the enrollment projections, the different methods that they use, and the logic behind them. Look at September enrollments for the last several years, you can see just an annual percentage generally are increasing over the last couple of years. I think when I look at the high school enrollment today, I don't think I've seen those numbers in the high school in a long time, so our high school numbers enrollment-wise have gone up. Again, looking at cohort, moving them up. Why this is important, I guess this would be my first, we need to start looking at physical space in our district. Middle school this year, every single classroom is used, in high school, we have two classrooms left, so we just need to begin having some conversations about this enrollment projection and how we're going to respond to numbers. As you know, in the last bond, we did put in 10 classrooms in the elementary school, we're down to a great 2. Now, there are some that we could combine and share services in the one room, but we're down to just two empty, two empty classrooms. All day, free preschool's not going to help the situation, I don't like bringing it, not a bad, I don't mean it that way, but it's going to use up a lot of space in our buildings. Any questions you had on this enrollment projections? Like numbers and fascinates, social dynamics and people's interest and trends, I mean, it's pretty fascinating. Just the five years shows a 13% increase in our student population. Not many districts are giving their boards this information in this way, like tendents reducing numbers. That's all there.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay, here we go. Next item on our agenda is board policy updates.
Well, if I start with my question to the board, do you want me just to go through each policy and highlight changes?
Yes.
Before I start, in the board policy, it is policy 1401, which is not in your packet because I'm not recommending any changes, they give definitions. And in the policy, it referenced a parent, in quotes, means a student's natural or adopted parent or legal guardian. So many cases in the policy, it uses a parent slash guardian, it's now, now just references parent with a capital P, going back to this definition, what defines parent.
I know a lot of them are that way.
Yeah, there's quite a few of those that will help.
Let's sit through this.
The first one, under 2201, general powers, that's that parent slash guardian is referenced now as parent. It references a Michigan School Code Law 6911408, and then it just updates the policy revision. That's the only change in that policy. And if I'm going too fast, please say something, or stop, just if you have questions or stuff. 2203, authority to establish curriculum, on the third page in, it talks about the financial literacy, it was a kind of a holder, now that we know that's for the class of 2028, we have to add that, and that just clarifies in that policy. That's the only change to that policy. In 2302, board code of ethics, it changes the parent slash guardian to parents in multiple cases. It also references, the, there was a typo, actually it was a typo on true side, not mine, it was, it referenced 4013, and it was 4103 in the policy number 12. It also eliminates a Michigan School Code reference, it no longer is pertinent. That's it for that. 2303, board violation of, violation of board code of ethics. The statement says, we're publicly incentring board member through a formal board resolution, you're actually, you're taking action which could include adopting a resolution, sign language clarifying on that one. That's it for that policy. 2401, board member election, at least one board office, you're not actually voting for the member, you're voting to fill the office, so it's a clarification, must be on the ballot at each regular, and that's by the staggering of terms, and it updates the legal authority regarding. 2405, board offices, it splits the, it used to be president, secretary, and treasurer, it splits that up to be president and secretary, and then the second one is the treasurer, it said you have to fill the treasurer position, and as we talked tonight, the legitimacy of that is treasurer's name is on all the checks and stuff through the district. And it just clarifies number four, a person elected or appointed to the vacancy will serve that until the balance of that person's term. This is regarding officer vacancies, not the election.
Right. Brian?
Yes.
Remember we talked about C, I can discuss this one with Brian. It says, removal of board officers, board by in favor of the members and serving, may remove a board officer from their officer position with or without cause. The language of without cause was not concerned to me.
So board member Candace did bring this, just to start the conversation, this is done, that was already previously approved by the board. So in essence, and I'm trying to recap, our conversation was, you have that authority now when you're picking the positions, you don't, if, if, or if you wanted someone else to be the president, you could make a motion to remove Deb as president and have another person be president. You don't need a legitimate or with-caused reason to do that, as long as you have four votes. Usually, 99%, there's reasons behind, and it's not just a, we just decided to do it, but it could if four board members wanted to remove an officer from secretary, or treasurer, or trustee, or vice versa.
So then what's your concern with that?
I just, I don't have a problem with the doing of it, I just feel like there should always be a law, it opens the world for, you know, fully, I don't know.
Yeah, I know that would, but you would still need the, the majority of the board to go along with that, you know?
Well, I mean, it's not unheard of.
I know.
You know, there are things like that that happen. And I just like the idea of there should be a reason for it, there should be.
If we want to further discuss that, you need to just let me know, because tonight we're just approving changes.
Yeah, I was just curious what her concern was.
I mean, not approving, thank you, we're just reviewing and going through the changes.
So really, her question comes in this, in this thing, if there's anybody else that has that feeling, then now is the time.
To say that, so that I could put it on the agenda down the road.
Right.
I do not, I do not share this concern, I just couldn't share what they were. Okay. Maybe I'm, I don't. Okay. I don't have a problem with this. Okay, let's move on. Ms. Paulsland?
Public participation at board meetings is a small change, his term, kind of you have to their name. Smoking tobacco and products, 3102, just to clarify, we're containing nicotine from any source in the definition of tobacco. That's it? There's more. There's more. 3104, school cameras and monitoring. Again, it's a change from parent slash guardian to parent as defined in the definition. Change. 3105, visitors and volunteers. There's quite a few, parent slash guardian to parent, domestic definition. District, district personnel that discovers a visitor who is not reporting to the main office will promptly direct the visitor to the main office. It just clarifies its personnel's role, that if someone's in the, in the building and they don't have the proper credentials, that we're directly getting them back to the main office. Which is basically number three, but it's part and put in number two. I believe in what I could, I looked at, it was originally supposed to be in two, and when we were erasing and adding, it was added as a third bullet and should never been. We don't count that change on that one. Volunteer drivers and non-school bus transportation. It just has to be in compliance with all applicable laws for the purpose of this section. Defines district going vehicles as vehicles owned or operated by the district, including a school bus or a private vehicle, like our trucks or our vans of the district. Again, it's parent guardian is referenced in parent. For events where the district oversees or coordinates transportation, such as a class field trip, district personnel and approved volunteer or student parent or guardian may transfer.
Should have just been parent there.
Yes. Just that says, again, a lot of this is oftentimes, we don't really use that, other than for sports or for preschool. Preschool parents drive their own kids to the field. A volunteer driver, if required to hold a chauffeur's license, they have to have it. If not, if it's a private vehicle, just as long as they have satisfactory proof of insurance, because remember when an accident happens, it covers their, goes to their insurance Volunteer drivers responsible for any loss or damage or liability if they're operating the vehicle. That's it for that one. Booster cloth.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Brian. I apologize. So, when you, you're checking the insurance policy of the vehicle that the, that the students are going in and not an insurance policy in the household of the student?
If someone's driving the car, their insurance.
It's their car.
It's their car. It's their insurance that has to be approved.
I guess I'm just, I'm confused by why. Like, because if something were to happen and the student were to be injured in that car, they'd have to go to the insurance in their household, not to that vehicle. It used to be the other way around, but it's not anymore. So, that's why.
I'll follow, I'll follow by it.
That's interesting. I mean, it used to be that way, but it's not anymore.
I'll follow.
Yeah.
3106, booster cloth, PTOs, and other support organization. Many of these are changing, parent slash guardian, parent. That's it.
How many of these kinds of groups we have? Do you know?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I can get it if I feel like.
It's okay. I was just curious.
Typically, there's, oftentimes, the forms and administrative guidelines come with the policy that I, that I create, and this is the form that's referenced. This is identifying who the people are in those groups, who the contact person. We do collect this based on using our facilities. This more formalizes the official groups that are tied with our. We do have on our website, under, I think it's going to be about us, various 501(c)(1) organizations that support the school, PTOs, band boosters, choir boosters, foundation. This will be where you would gather that information and put it out. These are the, the ones that tie to our group. Again, the form is just simply taking the parent guardian slash, parent slash guardian being parent. Use of detection dogs. We don't do this often, but we have in the past. Again, that's just referencing the notice given to the parent slash guardian when they will become parent, that strike through, a parent should not be a strike through. The blue is the good stuff. The red is the negative. Strike through language. Service animals, just clarifying language, a service animal must be under the control of its handler, rather than its board smithing correction.
Do we have any of those services in our presence?
We have two, three staff people who are, have trained service animals that they have approached me about utilizing their animals coming into school.
Got it.
I don't believe they did last year at all, but they have approached. 3115, this is the nondiscrimination and it's added anti-arrestment and non-retaliation. This is the section that you're going to see it out of the 5,000 and into the 3,000. It's been combined, so the protective classes are oftentimes with the LA Larson Civil Rights Act, as well as what the state of Michigan in Title IX descriptors are on here. It is, this particular policy talks about the sections in terms of that were required in formal resolution agreements, complaint this one process, discrimination, the tracking, keeping of documentation for a period of time. There are several of these that, that kind of go together. 35AA takes all of the definitions that were in previous sections and puts them into one You're going to see in the later policy, all of that stricken out, it's kind of moved to this section. 35B, 30, excuse me, 3115B defines who all the coordinators are, from our Title IX coordinator to our Section 504 coordinator, to our civil rights and employee complaint officer.
Brian, you don't have to do it tonight, but at some point, I'd be interested in knowing training that they go through to be in these specific roles.
Like I tell you, Title IX, we go through yearly. The training, we're actually getting scheduled for a training coming up on the 2020th. 504 coordinator is done through our attorney firm with the person, because every time there's a new position. And the civil rights, when there's, when someone takes over that position, they train them. There's not an annual training unless required by law, because it changes.
Got it.
3115D talks about the informal resolution. 3115E talks about the grievance, if there's someone has a complaint, this is the process. They have that complaint, what we will do. 3115F1 is the complaint form. It is not required that they build this form, but this form guides to help try to figure out what the resolution they're looking for. So, so we'll be stating they have a complaint, this is where we reference them to. 3515F2 is a sample notice of nondiscrimination that we will put out, that we do not discriminate. We do that on all of our letterheads, memorandums, et cetera. 3115G, additional requirements to prevent and address pregnancy discrimination. This is recently, some of our legislation that was passed, and it gives the legal authority in the back page, but it's making accommodations for, for individuals who are pregnant or nursing, which we do now. 3115H talks about some of the training requirements, the annual training that we do with all of our staff on Title IX, the record-keeping, policy notices, walking key thing, where we get all the documentation. And I'm going to reference the Title IX when I get to, or some of this document, when I get to the 5,000, that it's being removed there and it's put here. 3116, technology, acceptable use, it's a parent slash guardian slash parent change. There is a Section D which deals with state assessments and the use of technology and electronic devices, that basically students have to keep those devices outside of the testing area, test administrators.
They can't use it either.
And then penalty, if someone does, it would be the appropriate discipline. Again, we use a progressive discipline, so it could be anything from a more used discipline. And again, the latter part of that is changing parent guardian to parent. 3118, used to be Title IX sexual harassment, that's now under 3115. This is now nondiscrimination covenant in contracts with the district. So, we have a third party that we contract with, basically they got to ensure that they do not discriminate against individuals either. You see, this has a lot of language stricken, which when you start looking at these pieces, they're all in the 3115A, B, C, D section.
So, third, like the sub, when you say third party.
Third party, couldn't be if we were doing custodial contracts, which we don't anymore, but substitutes, that we ensure that they do not discriminate. If you're entering into contracts with construction people, et cetera. This is a long one, so. 3119 talks about experimental or pilot programs that fall outside of, talk about on a subsequent bargaining agreement. Basically, it allows that it could, we can run pilot program, much like we did with the, several of the curriculums, we ran them, kind of put them together, then ultimately we wanted to make it a course in the, in the building for the district, so it comes to the board's final approval. It can run, basically, if you think of it as a pilot program, you get the bugs and kinks worked out before you finalize it for, for adoption. We currently do not have any, everything runs through the state and then to us, but if we were to apply for any federal grants, there's a certain way of managing the federal 3207, school activities fund, just changing the legal authority, some gas rules or statements that were changed in amendment. 3208, security bond and district officials is referencing a legal authority, MCL 12410. 3211, post-assurance tax compliant. It just basically says the debt compliance officer will complete training at least annually. That's basically Tammy, and she does, goes through that with the Michigan school business 3301, purchasing and procurement, references a specific policy, 2202 and subsection C and any other parameter by the board, and that we have to follow purchasing guidelines. If there's an emergency situation, that's the competitive bid. This, this really goes back to what we're dealing with at the middle school. There's an emergency situation that, timing wise, in order to get the school open and middle school, we had, we had to move forward with that, for that, that project. 3301, purchasing and procurement. Oh, wait, no, I missed it. It's a double. 3303, gifts and donation. This is, again, referencing parent groups from the parent guardian. They typically use, they use a form. The form that we use and press it is probably the one that uses it most. If we're given dollars or equipment, that we have the discretion of how we choose. Hamlin Pub gives us money for the fundraiser, as they do on Mondays. They go to The Athletic. We, we accept those, and Cindy and I, we have, oftentimes, we'll write them a letter or have you sign the letter, we send them a thank you letter for that donation. 3303, construction bidding, just with the new prevailing wage requirements for construction. Then the legal authorities have been updated to reflect that. Construction administration, 3307. If required by the revised school code, we did this change a couple of years ago, that said if you made changes to your high school by at least 20% of the square footage, you had to have your plans submitted to the zoning, local zoning, which we did when we did the renovations with high school and add the gym and all that. But this is just stating it's only if it's required by section 1263 of the school code. The reason why this is a little challenged is sometimes, local authorities may ask for things, but they don't have the jurisdiction over the plans. That's the state. So, there could be a conflict in what's being asked and what's being required.
And it's only, that's okay, sorry to interrupt your flow there, but it's only for high schools? You don't have to add for other buildings? That just, hi. Something's a little odd. Does that make sense?
This policy ends with a talk about prevailing wage legislation that was passed. 3402, drills, plans, and reports. This talks about a cardiac emergency response plan, beginning with the 25, 26 school year. This board's going to get a plan presented to them of how we have a cardiac emergency response plan and how we train our, all coaches must be trained by 25, 26, in CPR, first aid, by either the American Red Cross, American Heart Association, or some organization that the MTE has approved. What we're watching is the January 2025, you'll get a waste drinking water management plan. Basically, this is moving to less drinking mountains, more bottle filters at schools. Similar to what we did in the middle school and the bottom. Where there's not a whole lot of money that has been allocated for this to be able to implement this.
And that was my question, right? So, this is both of these things? Are they both? You must do this, but there's not funding to, or making it happen necessarily, right?
Correct. Now, my understanding, cardiac is like, MHSA is running coaches that are charging, but there's still, there is still a cost to the district, some of the mileage or time, et 3403, reporting accidents, again, taking parent slash legal guardian to parent by the definition. 3406, integrated pest management, that's again, changing parent slash guardian to parents. Because basically, if we were doing asbestos abatement with contractors, they got to provide us some stuff before they can do work. One of it is that they have no criminal convictions or violation notices and any judgments ordered against them. I don't know this for a fact, but when I, when I was talking with the attorney on that, they believe that's tied to people who have judgments against them, who didn't do the job, and are now getting contracts with the school district to do asbestos removal, they didn't do it right in that district. So, this is their attempt to.
There had to be a reason.
We don't, we do not have very, very little asbestos left in the district. Last two months, we pretty much removed a lot of it. That's it for there, and there's the legal authority that's been updated. Firearms and weapons, individuals who could maintain a weapon on school property are peace officers, and those persons listed in the revised school code, a peace officer, I guess I believe, but it's.
Is it really a peace officer?
That's what they call it, they keep the peace.
With a gun.
And then the legal authority's been updated there. School safety, this used to be policy 5706. It's now going to be policy 3410, opioid, opioid E negative. Negative, it's been a long day, so I apologize. Basically, we, we will, what this is saying is that we are going to have this available to use should we have an overdose on campus, and that the appropriate training will be notified. What the change is, is just changing parent to guardian to parent. Basically, there's a student that has an overdose, the parent will be notified. Basically, there's a student that has an overdose, and the parent will be notified. Michigan Freedom of Education, Freedom of Information Act, procedures and guidelines. It defines where to find our FOIA request. It defines who the FOIA coordinator is, which has been Jamie. You can see it had a previous, elements in there previously that never got updated. It references the forms to be used in the policy. When you go to the forms, again, it's referencing these three forms. Just kind of skip to the back part where the forms are. The first form is a sample request of someone who is looking for a FOIA request. It gives them an example of how to request it. Second form is if their request, their information is not available, or doesn't exist, I should say, this is how, kind of how we respond. And the third form is the calculation of wages, hours, and benefits for the student, the cost of fulfilling a FOIA request. And so the only thing that would have to be updated on there are the wages and hours of the person in our office who makes, who makes the least amount, who's able to fulfill the FOIA request. The lowest, it may not be the lowest paid individual, depending if they have the ability to fulfill the requirement. It is, it's not someone who makes more towards the end. Forty-one oh-one, nondiscrimination. What you're going to see throughout this policy in a couple, it takes the word discrimination with a lowercase d and changes it to unlawful discrimination, which is a capital U and capital D, and that's, which also includes harassment and retaliation. So you're going to see this throughout, or it says unlawful retaliation, it converts it to retaliation and unlawful discrimination, which is based on whether it's section five oh-four, whether it's the Americans with Disabilities Act, whether it's the Pregnancy Discrimination Act, Pregnancy Workers Fairness Act, Genetic Information Act, the Michigan Elliot Larson Act, Michigan Personal Disabilities Act, Equal Pay Act, Title VI, Title VII, Title IX. It lists all the areas that someone could reference being discriminated at. This also includes the Michigan Paid Medical Leave Act and Family Medical Leave, Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Acts of nineteen ninety-four, several acts that now qualify that you can discriminate against. Equal employment, forty-one oh-one. Again, takes that discrimination and references unlawful discrimination, including harassment, retaliation, and multiple.
Yeah, we have a couple of them.
Okay, yeah, all right. Duplicate, apologies. Forty-one oh-two is anti-harassment. It simplifies and talks, you know, takes a lot of the title line out, because title lines reference in thirty-five, thirty-one fifteen, and this is just basically says employee should be able to work in an atmosphere free of unlawful harassment, and employees cannot engage in unlawful harassment. There's a lot of strike-through on that one. Does have the reference that, you know, includes board members, administrators, superiors. If you see it, you have to, you're obligated to report it, or if you know of something that's. Forty-one oh-four, employment complaint procedures for allegations impacting civil rights. This is, again, if you feel like you have been discriminated, unlawfully discriminated, retaliated, harassed, there's a process. Again, this is the procedure for the process. Forty-one oh-five, disability workplace accommodation for employees and applicants. Switching with disabilities and putting disabilities at the front. It references forty-one oh-five interactive form to try to resolve it. That's really it on that one. Forty-one oh-five A, this is a new policy, pregnancy workplace accommodations for employees and applicant. Basically, what we have to accommodate if we have an employee that is pregnant, reasonable Forty-one oh-five B, talks about religious workplace accommodations for employees and applicants. This is if they have, something in their religious beliefs prevent them from doing something to employ in their, in their line of work, that we have to make accommodation, reasonable accommodations for them. We can't discriminate against them. Forty-one oh-six is the Family Medical Leave Act. This is really just changing parent to the capital P to reference it according to definition. Hold the mic so long, my finger's got an indent, a square indent.
You know, why does it work?
And I wasted my time, or?
No, it worked, it's worked. It sounds like it.
Forty-one oh-six.
It's lit up. Yeah.
Forty-one oh-seventh refers to military leave, changing this one, it adds Space Force, not only Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, but also Space Force. Change there. Forty-one oh-nine is a policy regarding break time for nursing money, mothers, excuse me. We've had multiple occasions that we've made the combination that are needed for our staff that are nursing. Forty-two oh-one, employee ethics and standards. Again, parents and guardians is now referenced as parents. That is it in this one. No, I apologize. It's a section at the end of this one, talks about abuse and neglect. It defines to children, employee who suspects child abuse or neglect. There's certain things we can do, as you can see in the policy that did not change, but what it does add is number two, vulnerable adults, employees who have reasonable cause to believe or suspect abuse of an adult. And we do have adults, not only that work here, but also that are students here, that fall under adult protective services, rather than child protective services. Forty-two oh-two, just adds the adult protective services language to the child protective Forty-two oh-three, corporal punishment and limited use of reasonable force. Again, it just changes parent to guardian to parent. We do not do corporal punishment in our district. And there, when it says limited reasonable use of force, just to provide, there are certain cases where you have to go through training, CPI training, to be able to restrain a child, and there are reasons for it as a chemical user. And if you do, there's a documented trail that you have to follow of why you chose to restrain a child. Forty-two oh-four, confidentiality of student information, again, changes parent and guardian to parent. Forty-two oh-five, AG Criminal Justice Information System. This is the Chris, this is primarily HR, who has access to HR and the background checks of employees and how we secure it. There's very limited people who have access to it. I'd say Jamie and I are the only ones that have access to it. How you transport that data, you just can't email, you know, set a fingerprint, it's all, there's a process that you have to use. Security, and this is monitored by the state police. They do random checks of districts to make sure they have screens on their computers, that nobody sees anything, et cetera. You'll see in the chart there, there's a box that's highlighted in yellow. That's mine to do. I could not think of the company, and I completely forgot the S error that does our physical alarm monitors, and I'll have a name that goes in there for the final one, so. Again, there's just a lot of security for the fingerprints and procedures. Forty-two oh-six, a lot of the next set of policies deal with the changes in the legislation that apparently took effect from December of last year. There's an appeal process for evaluation rating, which deals with section twelve forty-nine of the revised school code for both teachers, as well as administrators and superintendent. And I know many of you or somebody went to the training last week. This will all be kind of rolling out as we negotiate this with each of the bargaining units. Forty-two oh-seven, third-party contracting is prohibited. Basically, can't third-party contract because of collective bargaining agreement. This is change in a lot of the legislation in the revised school code, three-eighty, eleven-eight, three. Used to be able to privatize pieces, now that you can't. It's very, it's very limited. Abortion referrals and assistance. If you recall, several years ago, there was a, this was actually when we approved this, was there was a law that was passed that basically said a public school employee cannot, it's a consultant or help a student, guide them in getting an abortion, et cetera. And if you did, there was a state aid penalty. The previous state aid penalty was removed, but this policy basically says, school district official, board members, and district employees shall not refer a student for an abortion or assist a student in obtaining abortion. This prohibit, prohibition does not apply to a person who is the parent of the student. So if I, if, my daughter was going here, and we were having that conversation, I would not be in violation of the policy because I'm a parent at that point, but if I'm talking to your daughter, now I would be in violation of the policy. General rules, again, taking parent to be the capital P for the definition of what a relative is. It does allow exceptions in the best interest of the district, with prompt notice is given to the board, to allow relatives to be hired. Again, it's, where this is coming into play, it's just the manpower and the amount of workforce shortages that are out there. There's more and more people that are, have some relative connection. Forty-two fourteen, outside activities and employment, basically, again, references parent guardian to be parent. Forty-two fifteen, district technology, again, parent guardian, parent change there. Requests for district records, rec, records must be properly directed to the FOIA coordinator over if you're looking for acceptable use and so forth. Again, nothing significant. Forty-two oh-one sixteen, personal communication devices, parent slash guardian is now referenced as parent. Forty-two seventeen, again, parent slash guardian, parent. Forty-two twenty-one, employee search, again, parent slash guardian is now parent, the exact definition. Forty-two twenty-eight, no expectation of privacy. Again, this allows the district to search district property and district equipment. There is no expectation for employees that there is any privacy of its district property, and it just references the legal authority for which that is applied. AI, forty, I think I'm missing a policy number at the top. Forty, it's under forty-two hundred, employee ethics, I don't know the policy number because for some reason I cut out all my copy. But this talks about generated artificial intelligence. It's the beginning of guidelines of providing for our staff of acceptable use. If an employee is going to use AI, it must be, it has to be superintendent designee approved before, so we're looking at using this in the classroom for instructional purposes. There has to be conversation. Employee training, one of the questions that Tracy did ask me was what employees have been trained. Administrators were trained last week. Thursday, we had a three-hour training on just AI itself. It sparked a whole lot of conversation, and then all of our training this year, we'll have a piece of AI with our staff that we're going to have in the conversations with the world our students are entering. Forty-four oh-one, definitions, word smithing, I think, on that one. Forty-two oh-two, this policy is stricken, but you'll see the policy that's behind it, forty-two oh-two dash R, it's a replacement policy.
Forty-four.
Forty-four oh-two is, this new policy is replacing the other one because it references, we have to, place, it has to be negotiated. And in the absence of a, something in the bargaining unit, the superintendent or it has the ability to place individuals. Forty-four oh-three, performance evaluation, again, this policy is being removed. The replacement policy is forty-three oh-three, performance evaluation. Again, evaluation has to be negotiated now. It is no longer a prohibited subject for bargaining. Forty-four oh-five, reduction in force and recall. This is removed. Again, that's all part of the bargaining process now to define how, if you have to reduce staff, how that process will. There's a forty-four oh-five replacement policy, again, it just says the same thing. It's in, it's, it has to be negotiated.
So like for right now, we needed to do what these things?
In all contracts, except teachers and the administrators, they have this in place.
Okay.
It's defined. In the absence of any policy, we go what's been the past practice.
Okay, because I was thinking about the teachers.
Forty-four oh-eight, termination. This, again, is updating, it used to be a five-year probation, it's now a four-year probation. It talks about non-teaching professionals and teachers not subject to the Teacher Tenure Act, such as preschool, TSRP teachers, or teachers who didn't serve, and they have a different set of rules than a teacher falls under the Teacher Tenure Act. Forty-four oh-nine, non-renewal. This is basically new guidance out of your non-renewing a teacher, the process to, that has to be enforced. This does have. Wrong section. Forty-four oh, forty-five oh-three, performance evaluation. Again, this is, deals with the evaluation in individual contracts or administrative, again, unless something is written elsewhere on the collective bargaining agreement. We are beginning negotiations with the teachers of this evaluation on Friday. Forty-five oh-seven, termination, again, if it's not in the collective bargaining agreement, that defines how we terminate someone in the process, that is up your call. Forty-six oh-three, this is regarding the superintendent's evaluation. If you recall, the effective, highly effective minimally of all change, developing, needing support, and otherwise, similar to teachers, administrators, it's going to be a mid-year email process, which I know many of you learned about on Tuesday, and we'll be sharing. Just now puts this in alignment with the teachers and administrator. Student expression, the only change is, changes the word from urges to incites, a violation of the law. You can't incite people to violate the law. Fifty-one oh-two, lockers. There's some word smithing, switching some words around, but basically, if the principal or designee requests law enforcement to help search the lockers, and we have done that, especially if we're dealing with a situation of an unknown, a potential knife or weapon or so forth, we just want to make sure if it is something in there that gets handled, but we can ask, the law enforcement cannot search it on their own, we have to ask for them to do it. Fifty-one oh-three, search and seizure. Again, changing parent guardian to parent. Just kind of clarifies, if we confiscate, contraband, or evidence, the building principal may store, this group plays until the discipline hearing. There's no obligation, and it has to be returned to the parent. Usually, we take a picture, and that's brought to the discipline hearing, and sometimes it might be better if the actual weapon or issue is there. Age of majority, fifty-one oh-four, parent guardian is changed. A student who's eighteen years or older can request a personal curriculum. I have a clarification on what D means. I have a clarification on what D means, because I don't know what other rights I would be able to give this student that I don't give. So I do have a player variation question in that I thought I was gonna get back by today, and if I can just give an example of what it was, there has to be a reason why. It used to be G, and now it's D, so it wasn't our previous policy, I just couldn't think of it. Fifty-one oh five, collaboration with outside agencies. This basically says the district could collaborate with outside agencies to offer programming Off the top of my head, you know, if you're doing after-school programming, we might have a company to come in and do it. That could be, could be the mentorship that we talked about at the middle school last year. Fifty-one oh six, deals with transgender students. You'll see a lot of the language and definition was stricken, it got, it's moved to the thirty-one fifteen section, but basically if we have transgender students, our goal, our focus is to provide a supportive environment for them while they're here at that school. You'll see nondiscrimination, parents are capital P's, gender identity and gender, preferred gender pronouns are referenced, it used to be capital, now they're lowercase. A parent or student can request a gender support plan. A lot of this policy is exactly what we previously approved. There are some changes to it from a streamlined language and parents being capital P's rather than lowercase. It references a new legal authority, the bicycle code, referencing that legal authority section. Fifty-two oh one, investigation, arrest, and other lawful law enforcement contact. This is basically changing parent, guardian to parent. Law enforcement is responsible for providing the students of all applicable rights if they are being arrested. Again, it talks about notifying parents and stuff. Fifty-two oh two, unlawful discrimination, this is dealing with students, this section's dealing with students. Again, it's taking the broader definition of unlawful with all the different laws that were referenced in the previous policy, like what handbook, anonymous reports, how we deal with them. A lot of this, you can see when you look at the language investigative procedure, it's all in the three-one-one-five section. Fifty-two oh three, basically just starts off, hazing is prohibited, that's still unchanged. We can give all the definition of what hazing is, but it's basically, straight off the bat, it's now allowed. Fifty-two oh four, student appearance and dress code. Student dress, it takes out hairstyle and makeup. A lot of it has to do with the legislation that was passed about not discriminating against hairstyles and other ethnicity, stuff that was recently passed. I say recently, it's probably been a year or two, maybe longer. Fifty-two oh six, talks about student discipline, again, changing parent, guardian to parent, primarily the change. It does add towards the end of the policy, victims of alleged sexual assault, what we have to do if we have a victim, particularly if two students are in the same school together, one being the victim, one being the assailant. Fifty-two oh six A, due process, again, parent, guardian changes, minor. Fifty-six, fifty-two oh six B, students with disability. It changes the word from suspend or remove because we can only remove a student for so long, and then there's a manifestation, it has to be held, so there's some language clean up there. Parental guidance, parent, guardian slash parent changes. Adds a statement that if misconduct was a manifestation, but the district failed to implement the student's IDP, the student must take immediate steps to remedy it. Fifty-two oh six, reinstatement procedures, again, parent, guardian is changed to parent. We've done this, but this solidifies it. It said that the board establishes different reinstatement terms or procedures at the time of expulsion. Those terms and procedures will apply in lieu of the procedures involved, so if there's certain things that have to be done, we've done that with various discipline hearings we've had. Fifty-two oh six, enrolling, enrollment following misconduct at another school, basically parent, guardian change. So clarify, who have that, that's major. Fifty-two oh six, suspension from class, again, changing parent, guardian to parent. Fifty-two oh eight, student acceptable use on the internet, taking out the word policy because this is the policy. As part of the internet safety policy, the district must implement the rules and procedures identified in three-one-one-six, which is all about internet safety and our protection for students' privacy. Fifty-two oh nine, student use of cell phone, electronic devices, again, this parent, guardian, parent change. Fifty-two ten, GPS tracking devices with audio surveillance, again, if we have those, it's changing parent, guardian to parent. Fifty-two twelve, registered sex offender, and we're adding the word student, this is applying to the student. We just have to apply not only for the policy fifty-four eleven, but also any laws regarding a student who has to register as a sex offender. Fifty-two thirteen, personal protection orders against students. If there is, we're gonna follow the state federal laws regarding, that should be state law, federal laws, not state. Fifty-three oh one, compulsory attendance and absenteeism. We added the T-ten, that was within our handbook, it wasn't there previously. Again, changing parent, guardian to parent. It talks about verified by not only a physician, but it could be a physician's assistant or nurse practitioner. It spans who can, numbers can come from. Fifty-three oh two, enrollment in kindergarten, again, just changing parent, guardian to parent. Fifty-three oh three, student enrollment and withdraws, parent, guardian to parent. If these, if we have to, the policy previously said this, the district may independently verify a student's residency if, basically if there's question, and if there's, we might have to use legal options to verify. In all my years here, I think I've had this, one time I've had to verify because there was a question called, did they live in the district? And it was, we didn't use legal authority or anything like that. It was more just getting the right documentation. Fifty-seven, we, the student oral health assessments begin with kindergarteners this year, so we will follow that policy. Make sure they have their oral health assessment undone prior to coming to kindergarten. This one's this year. No, no. That's twenty-five, let's see. Fifty-three oh four, non-public school students, part-time attendance. Basically, this is, this policy is saying that we can provide instruction in non-public schools. There's some process they have to go through in order to participate in our extra curricular activities that non-public school students have to be registered in our district for whatever legally they can be, especially if they want to homeschool a student. Fifty-three oh five, with school of choice, the door, the board could designate a limited spot, so you could say, we have five spots in eleventh grade, ten spots in eighth grade. Typically have not done that. Requesting records usually is from the school, not the district, so it's to, like, it's probably. Foreign students, basically the district does not discriminate based on immigration or visa status, and there's a process that students have to go through if they're a foreign student to be able to register, and this policy kind of defines it. Homeless is fifty-three oh seven, next policy, clarifying who our homeless liaison is, the point person. Again, parent, guardian, resources is listed there. Protection of pupil's rights under fifty-three oh eight, deals with parent, guardian name changes. It's really out on this one. Fifty-three oh eight, protection of pupil rights, again, parent, guardian changes, name changes, competence substantiated. Fifty-three oh nine, student records and directory information. The three B, it's a duplication, photographs is kind of listed in twice, I had to read it. The school year date of attendance, updates the date of attendance as an example. Section three, the district will make arrangements for parents available to students to inspect their records in thirty days. I clarified, opened up some of that language. Lot of parent, guardian corrections. The district, added language, the district will not disclose a student or parent's phone number, address, or the parent's employment address to another person who is the subject of a court order that prohibits the disclosure, so if someone's involved in a court order, even though that's directory information, they're part of the court order, we won't restrict it. Just, we are notified of court orders, it would be enough to the person telling us there's a court order. Fifty-four oh one, parent involvement, again, parent, guardian slash parent changes. That's the change. Fifty-four oh two, communication with parents, again, parent slash guardian to parent. Fifty-four oh three, same change, parent slash guardian to parent. Fifty-four oh four, free textbook materials and charging of fees, parent, guardian, the parent change of that one. Fifty-four oh five, Title I parent engagement policy. This reflects the Title I guidance that we receive in parent contract. It doesn't require any more joint creation of this, but we have to have this for Title
Yes.
Yeah, I'll D. This is probably the previous one, too. This is twenty, that's been there. Fifty-four oh six, Title I funding, it's just taking the word guardian out of the title. Fifty-four oh seven, instructional programming, parent and guardian changes. Gives the first level objection to the teacher if there's things that the parent objects to, what the process is, using material, just continuing or whatever. Fifty-four oh eight is an intentionally left-blind policy. Fifty-four oh nine is academic credit graduation, just updates our current requirements, which are already in the handbook, with minimum credits. Fifty-four ten, just a change, taking out guardian from the title for commencement. Fifty-four eleven, student promotion and retention, again, parent and guardian is changed. Some legislative changes regarding students who attend the Title I school in district without mediacally hearing progress. They don't even mention that, it's by that adequately progress anymore. Fifty-four twelve, class rank, just taking out the word guardian. Fifty-four thirteen, it used to say student recognition, it's senior recognition, and when I looked at the previous policy, it was, it's always been senior, there's a typo when we adopted these in twenty. And basically, this is how we recognize our seniors with the highest honor, summa magnita cuma. This is where you would put if you wanted valedictorian and salutator in the distress. Fifty-four fourteen, it'll, there's three options that you could give alternative certificate application, typically A is what we have done and continue to do, but vocational readiness for someone who can't get A, and C is certificate of attendance to give those that are leaving or graduating, depending on their path after high school. Because for some students, if you issue a diploma, it ends their resources that they could have up till age twenty-six, so these are alternate certificates that you can have.
Right, and A, that second line, terms the appropriate number of high school, should it be credits?
Fifty-four fifteen, it basically, it used to say we would implement procedures for the district summer school program, but basically they're gonna follow the student code of kind of the handbook, the district summer school program. Done another setup. Fifty-four sixteen, homebound hospitalization. We talked about the, as soon as possible, we need to convene the IP team to amend the student's IP without a meeting and with parent agreement to provide the least restrictive environment. Fifty-four seventeen, just changing parent, guardian to parent. Fifty-four eighteen, same thing, taking out the word guardian. Fifty-four nineteen, reading assessments, instruction, intervention, again, just taking out the word guardian. This was that read by grade three policy that years ago, used to have a lot of, a lot of stuff. Fifty-four twenty, sex education, we are still an absence district. We, Becky and I talked about the survey, as a side note, that we'll go out to parents when we, what we promised, what we were doing, just lost track in last year. But if we are, do go down that road, there's a whole set of policies and processes we have to follow. Fifty-four twenty-one, work-based learning, just updates the legal authority, Andrea's talked about this a couple times during our CTE. Fifty-five oh two, student government. Basically, reorganize the government, that's why it's stricken through, they have the ability to elect officers and representatives, just clarifying the government, student government. It just allows the principal to remove any pre-approved materials after a useful time.
I used to go down the hallway.
So it doesn't, they can't say you approved them, we gotta keep them after the fact. Fifty-four oh three, rights of non-destitute parents, again, taking out the guardian based on the definition in forty-two oh one. Fifty-four oh four, free textbook and material, and changing parent, guardian to parent. Oh yeah, same thing, parent, guardian. Fifty-four oh five, Title I, engaging.
We already did that.
We did this one, okay. This whole sentence.
Yes, you did. You gotta keep going till you get to fifty-five oh six.
Fifty-five oh six, field trip, yeah, there's a lot on there, duplicates there as well. Basically, it removes the stipulation that chaperones must be at least twenty-one if the parent or guardian, we have a lot of older brothers and sisters who go on field trips with them, and as long as they meet the chaperone requirements and the background checks, they're good. Fifty-five oh seven, extracurricular. Change on this one is, big change is, student groups may not be required to perform at political rallies or events or religious ceremonies. They can perform, but it's not a requirement that they have to perform. They can perform, but it's not a requirement that they have to perform. 5510, student initiated extracurriculars. If they want to create a club, there's a process, there's an appeals process, and then the appeal basically is final, is the decision. I don't think we've had any denials of any student clubs that have come through the process. Go by memory, so. 5601, special education, just says we're going to follow, we're not going to discriminate following state and federal laws. 5602, independent educational evaluation, this changing parent guardian to parent, basically if a parent requests it, there's a process we go through. 5603, section 501, and changing parent guardian to parent. 5701, abuse and neglect, it takes the word child off, because there's a section on child abuse and neglect, the mandatory quarters, and on the back page, you'll see the vulnerable adults. 5702, student illness or injury, and just changing parent guardian to parent. 5703, medication, changing parent guardian to parent. 5704, student insurance, changing parent guardian to parents. 5705, just changing parent guardian to parent. Why the copy, or should we shift it?
I don't know. That's kind of funny.
5706, we moved that opiate up in the policy, so this was an intentionally left blank policy. 5707, is a school wellness plan policy, which we are required to have for, not only good to have, but for food and nutritional services, but it's basically changing parent guardian to parent. It adds our updated meal charges, students who qualify for free lunch won't be denied on a reversible meal.
Does that, that's number three, Brian?
Yes.
So, even though our students are getting free lunch, free breakfast, do we need to have this?
And remember, that's a section of the graphic, if you change it anytime.
So we have this in place?
Right. 5709, lice, nits and bedbugs, you know, probably start scratching your head, because that's what we do. Just changing parent guardian to parent. Student 5710, student suicide prevention. We will identify a student prevention coordinator, which would be your student support services, because the resources that are tied, that would access should be, most, in most cases, if we have a student who's, within this situation, they're dealing with our social workers, which work closely with our special. We also do a staff development that talks about parental identifying signs, it's part of our annual training we do with staff, and then what the initial response and parent notification, should we have a student who's expressing suicidal thoughts and ideology. 5711, toileting, which basically means you need to be potty trained unless there's a 504, section 504, or toileting is part of the instructional program. Maybe it's an early childhood special education program, typically those students have an You know, if a student has repeated accident, we could look at a 504 IEP evaluation, see if there's a health impairment. 5712, concussion awareness, just parent changing parent guardian to parent. 5713, immunization to communicative diseases, again, changing parent guardian to parent. This does talk about, I mean, it flips around, it wasn't there. When students are entering seventh grade, there's those periods that we have to get updated immunization, and if a parent does go for the exemption, they can still do that.
You don't do it anymore at the ninth grade, right? I'm just curious.
No. Ninth grade is, is not immunization.
Don't worry about it. Ninth grade is vision. No, they used to. Vision hearing. They were just trying to recover that, we used staff to check the health records.
I'm going to check.
There's another, there's other immunization. Yeah, is it, what is it? Pardon me? Yeah, something like that. I thought there was another one, ninth grade.
50, I'll look at it to clarify, but then just to clarify now. 5714, threat assessment and response. In our crisis management plan, there is the threat assessment, behavioral threat assessment. All of our staff have been trained. Billy will be going on the 21st, and I know social will also be going on the 21st. 5715 is the oral, oh, apparently this has the date, that we will follow the oral health screening. We have the screen date. 5804, basically adds the community service power, or community liaison and power school quarter to be able to issue building permits. Using previous policy was the building principal or designee. This allows them to also issue it, especially during the summer. 5805, student video recording, parent guardian corrections. That's it.
Brian, did you say that you made a correction to number 163 on the list, it should be 5715? I was reading something when you were going over that one, so that's why.
What's the policy?
It says 5115, but it should be 5715. Seven more i's are going to be there. Right. Or seven, or sets. Five's.
5715?
Yeah, on this, it says 5115. So for when the minutes are done or whatever, it's like, on this page, it says 50, it says 5115 on 57.
So, my question is, I have a couple follow-ups I'm going to go through and get a response to you. Religious exemption, 3105, the insurance, oral health confirmed, 2526. Got a question in 19, correction, grammatical, is there anything that, because the intent would be for board approval at the next board meeting, the recommended changes?
So, since this is, oh God, this is the Title IX changes, I mean, what is the law state that we have, what do we have done by?
Well, the regulations that, when in effect, August 1st. Now, you, at our retreat last week, we, Jennifer Starlin was at our retreat with the administrators, and we spent a half day doing all legal updates, things to watch out for, current court cases that are out there. She did reference, and I will just share with what I do know, out of the District Court of Kansas, there has been a lawsuit filed by four states and three organizations that are part of that. Forgive me, I don't know the three organizations, I know the Moms of Liberty are one of the organizations. And in the lawsuit that was filed, and I'm paraphrasing because I have not read the actual law or the court case, but basically it says, they want an injunction for, and they included school districts and schools of kids whose children were members of these three groups, one of them being the Moms of Liberty. If their children attend the school district, there's an injunction or a hearing to not have to implement the 2024 regulations. And again, I'm not a legal expert, but I'm just kind of giving you what, the Cliff Notes version. There is a list of school districts, and our four schools, so we don't have four schools, have been named in the list, along with Romeo, some Utica schools, two Utica schools in Utica, four West Bloomfield. They have Richmond Community High School, Richmond High School, our legal name with the state is Richmond Community High School, but everything that we get, everything submitted is Richmond High School, which is probably the discrepancy. So, as an option, until it's acted upon, you're not required to pass Title IX. The recommendation of Trune is to pass the legislation or pass the policies, and the guide goes two-fold. One is, if you don't pass the amendment, then we fall back on the 2020 regulations, which were issued in response to the Michigan State Larry Nassar and all that was going on there. There is a lot of hurdles that have to be done. That's one approach. You could file or pass the legislation, and if a court case came up, according to Jennifer Starlin, more than likely OCR is going to take the case and put it off the side until the ruling happens in the court. So, the recommendation of Trune is to pass the regu, the policy, sorry, thank you, as recommended. They do align with the 2024 guidelines that start in August. Like I said, there is a, there is a lawsuit out there that was filed in the District Board in Kansas, very unusual the way it was done, but it was done. And though we didn't participate in the lawsuit, we are named in the lawsuit.
And our district lawyer has confirmed that we are named?
Yes.
Because there is a list out there that does not name us.
There's, well, there's three lists out there. They had a, forgive me, I don't, they had like a July 6 deadline, they extended it to July 20 something, and then there's a July 31 list. There are three lists out there, based on three lists that were submitted in this process. Don't quote me on the dates, the July dates, but I know there are three lists out there. We are on at least the July 26th, maybe the 31st. The organization, and again, there's three, I know Moms of Liberty is one, I can't think for life, and I thought it was in her notes here. But, they're, members of those organizations, basically, send to the judge, we want to include the schools that our kids are attending in that legislation. That's why you see, when you look at the list here, you don't see all of Utica schools, you only see a couple. You don't see all of, actually, it might be all of them, but you don't see all districts, like Walt Lake has two schools, two schools named after it, one middle school, one elementary school. Van Dyke's on the list, Rochester, Romeo, St. John's, West Bloomfield. Oh, here's this, in July 15th filed, there were the 2, 4, 6, 8, nine Michigan schools. On the July 26th filed, it was expanded considerably. On the July 31st list, is when Richmond was added. So there are the three lists.
So the three organizations that are part of this lawsuit are Moms of Liberty, Young Republicans Foundation, and Female Athletes United. So their members were just allowed to add school districts as they wanted to, based on those deadlines, is that?
If their members, students, were in a school, they were allowed to add those schools. That's my understanding, talking to our attorney. So.
But our attorney's recommendation is to what?
Trune Law's recommendation is to approve the policy. And if, if we have a case that, you know, a complaint that we've got to file, then a couple things are going to happen. Either it's stay, and we're going to have to go back to the old guidelines, or it's just going to be held, and we're not going to do anything with it.
Until something, until something is resolved. So you guys keep on keeping that.
Because the district, the federal court in Kansas does not have jurisdiction over Michigan.
Correct. That's what I was going to say. Correct. Yeah, well, that's why I'm not, I am not an attorney, that's why I'm asking what our attorney's recommendations are for us. Like, we have to kind of count on the professionals to hopefully guide us.
Their recommendation is to approve the policy, policy revisions, excuse me. And then, you know, like I said, if we have a case, any type of Title, Title IX case or harassment, the first call we're making is to determine, make sure all of our Ts are crossed and I's are dotted.
Right, if we have a situation first.
Correct.
Right.
Regardless of the policy itself, I will tell you, the process is streamlined in the 2024 regulation than what was in the 2020 regulation. And that is simply because it was written for colleges and universities, not written to address these situations in the 812.
Right.
And your opinion, because I know that the teachers and they have, they have twenty-nine, is there going to be a lot more responsibilities on them to have to keep track of all these possible potentials and?
I wouldn't say there's no more. I mean, the only time, regardless of the policy, we have an obligation to train our staff that if you know that harassment, or you recognize it, or you see, you have an obligation to report it. The process is going to stay, we're still going to have a process, whether it's a 24 or 20 policy, regulations. The documentation, you've still got to keep that documentation so long. You still have to do, you have to have a, a fact, there's different roles that you have to have. You have to have someone who's looking in at the case, you have to have a decision maker, you have to have another person that's appealing. So in our case, unless that student's up to having a high school, Andrea could, Mrs. Abel could be getting the facts and getting the statement. She could be turning that over to Mrs. Mangudi, who is the decision maker, and Mrs. Mangudi, based on this, has to make a decision, and if they don't like the decision, then that's going to go to Mrs. Morella, who's going to look at that, hear the appeal case for it. I mean, that's still going to happen, regardless of 24 or 20, there's still those roles. What's the main difference that I can see is, it's a broader discrimination retaliation, unlawful discrimination retaliation, harassment. But there's still the ability of the district, as you're going through the process, to, I don't want to say throw the, throw the case up, that's not the right word, dismiss it, that there's no basis for it.
With our own internal investigation.
With our own internal investigation. So the training that our administrative team has, they've gone through the full day training already. This one's a four-hour training that they go through, where they go over the rules and procedures of what, how to do it. So regardless of the policies or the regulations, maybe there's even a change that shouldn't be, there's still a process that we are obligated to go through if we have a complaint that comes forward to us. Now, I think my, I think the discrepancy is that definition of what is harassment or what is discrimination based on the categories or the protected classes. I think that's the crux of some of the disagreement. From my perspective in the district, if anybody comes in and says, I don't feel safe, or I feel like Joseph's retaliating, that's because I didn't act, or Elizabeth is discriminating, we have an obligation to look into it. Now, again, the 30,000 foot is, I don't want to say the politics, it shouldn't be politics, but the politics that are happening around the overall context of this. So, my recommend, I don't see this any more work than what we're already obligated to do. And again, I don't look at it as work, I figure that there's a process that's in place if this does occur in our district. Because the downside without any regulations is... Because the downside without any regulation is we're doing this how we think we should be, and we might even be mildly law, and none of us are employers or attorneys, and I don't know how, and we're relying on them to give us the guidance.
Or there isn't anything in place, there's a lot of discrimination and a lot of inequality that happens consistently and regularly. And that's not okay.
For any student.
For anybody, an employee, a student, it's not okay.
And Ryan, is there any, there's not any grants or federal funding or anything that we would pay--
Losing.
If we didn't do it.
Correct.
Yeah. If we didn't, just like check a box of some sort for applying for any other type--
I don't do anything that I'm aware of. Like our title grant, which is a formula grant, we have to upload our non-discrimination statement to that we have one. But that's, that's a formula base. We have that regardless of this policy, we have the statement. There's nothing that Renee has ever signed or that I've signed that said, "We're going to follow a specific law." There's general statements that you're going to follow federal and state laws, or applicable laws, however that applies.
If we, as a district, are found to not be following the law, there is the negative, there's something negative that happens in the district if we do not follow the law.
There would be. I mean, you risk, again, I don't know anybody that's done it recently or had to have it recently, you risk a tie-up with your federal fund. It's a risk. And for us, that's, you know, probably about a million dollars if you look at special ed, breakfast and lunch programs. Again, it's a risk. I cannot sit here and tell you so-and-so district lost their federal funding because they didn't follow. I don't know that for certain. I think at one of our board meetings, I think actually Jennifer made the statement, she's not aware of it, but it's a possibility, it's a risk, that we want to.
Or monies would be linked to lawsuits--
I don't know exactly.
--that would potentially take money away from other areas of the district because we would have to be funding--
Yeah, if there's a lawsuit filed against the district, our liabilities are only up to a certain point. And we do look at that every year when we do the budget, you know, we look at kind of what the going rate of a settlement case is to try to make sure our insurance policy covers that. Because if you don't, then obviously then you are losing your general fund because your insurance money doesn't, you know. And a bus accident's probably the best example, you know, that can be very costly, and you don't have enough insurance, you know, then this district and the community's on the hunt for the settlement. And I don't want to go into this community saying, "I need a $40 million bond to pay for a lawsuit because we didn't have enough insurance." But it's a possibility, I mean, who knows the way juries issue money? But yeah, if there's someone who felt they were discriminated against and would have insurance covered up to a certain point, and if they were, they won their lawsuit, there could be a judgment that goes against us.
We're all set. The next item on our agenda is our MSBA Annual Leadership Conference.
So we, I put this on the agenda because it's coming up, and I know we had a conversation in the spring. I don't need any action by tonight, but if we wanted to have the conversation about the upcoming conference, if people are interested in going, Cindy has the ability to, before the 20th, or after the next meeting, to still register those that want to go.
I think the time is 30, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the deadline.
Did you, you held rooms?
Yep, August 30.
Yeah, we have rooms held, so try to minimize travel and, you know, transit, so we can always cancel them if we don't need them without any penalty. This will be the conversation, if people want to go, to put it into the--
Where is it happening in this year?
Lansing.
Is it in Lansing?
Did everybody get a complaint book?
I did.
Color flyer? And show the speakers and all that?
I didn't get it. Did you get that?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. But maybe. I probably did get that then. You said tonight we got that?
No.
No.
I'm just going to say I haven't--
There's a packet break before the action, and we have these items here--
All right.
That talks about--
All right.
So do we need to let you know by the next meeting if--
Yeah, we could do, because you have to pass a action item--
To send people.
To send people. So if people could let me know before the next meeting, so we know, I can put the names in to prove it, that would just be doing.
Okay. Everybody go ahead. Okay. So we need to let Ryan know before the next meeting, so he knows how many. Okay, next item on our agenda is our Board of Education's student rep to report. I'm going to pass it to Margaret to start.
Thanks. Well, everyone, we have two new student board representatives this year. We have Elizabeth Shaffer, who is going to be a junior, and Joseph Pacino, who is going to be a senior. And for those in the viewing audience, Mrs. Fortuna, Mrs. Sutton, and I conducted interviews. Five, five students we interviewed, really, really good candidates, and these two rose to the top, and we're excited to have them. Mr. Wamsley and I did a little orientation meeting with them, and they're both excited to be here, although they're not as excited to be here still at 10:30 at night.
Which is not--
Elizabeth and I were just whispering, I said, "It doesn't always go."
It doesn't always go away.
So it's going to be better.
Get those policies out.
But they are excited, they have some really neat ideas of things they want to do that they talked with Mr. Wamsley about. They're going to get a meeting to meet with the administrators so that they can sit down with them and that the administrators know who they are, and they know who the administrators are for when they do their reports. But we are just really excited to have them. And now, Joe, do you want to--
Report tonight?
Say a couple things that you had going on, that you might relate to. We had said this evening that this would just be kind of a, get introduced to everything, watch how the board meeting goes, because administrators were really just coming back to work this week, so there wasn't a lot for them to be able to talk about, so.
Yeah, most of what we had planned was kind of already touched during, early on in the meeting, kind of like the fall sports. The only thing that I guess I would like to add is the preparation for Blue Devils' Day on the 27th of August. Other than that, yeah, just, we're excited and happy to be here.
I'm glad you're here, welcome. We're glad to have you. And just to know, you can participate in our discussions.
Oh, they know all about that.
I'm looking forward to it.
So should I, when I, I'm never in the past, but now we're kind of trying to make them more, should I do attendance? I don't, I know that they're not part of the quorum.
I think, I think you don't because they're not--
Not part of the--
Yeah, they're not part of the voting. But they, they do have the ability, if they want, if they, you know--
To participate in discussion.
Whatever, they have the ability to have a discussion, or if they want to bring things to us--
Right, that's what I know, okay. That makes sense.
Yes.
Well, welcome.
Because you're a recite of the state, we have a forum together.
Right, no, exactly, right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, kind of would be cool to introduce them every, every day, you know?
Well, you could, you could do--
Kind of--
Have a forum, and you could say, and--
And President is--
Elizabeth is here.
Maybe I'll do something like that.
Yeah, that's, that's probably something for the viewing audience, and that, that's--
So they understand or know--
Okay.
Or these two extra people.
Yeah, right, right.
Especially if they don't watch it all.
Especially when they start talking, not people are going to watch it.
Yeah. That's a good idea, I think I'll--
Yeah, I think that is.
Well, thank you, guys, for volunteering and for doing this, and we welcome you, and we welcome your input.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So nothing tonight, then?
That's it.
Okay. We're going to move on. Our next item on our agenda is our superintendent and legislative update.
I don't have any updates legislatively. As Joseph said, our Blue Devils' Day is the 27th, the Tuesday, from 5 to 8. We will again be doing a community open house and dinner, so the community, the whole entire community as well, if they come in and check out our buildings and see our facilities. As a board member, Toto Margaret has said, today was the first day for the administrators and secretaries to return. Teaching staff will start back next week setting up rooms, and then officially the 26th, and everybody else is primarily starting on the 26th, parapods, media people, service, et cetera. So 26th is our welcome back. The board is welcoming to that welcome back ceremony. We'll have it in the auditorium for the entire staff, beginning at 8 o'clock. We'll get more information on the details on that. Just as it will be put in the welcome back letter to the parents, but this year I am starting something a little new. It's the third Monday of every month, we're going to host a, it's in the evening, 6:30 to maybe 7:30, 8 o'clock, an hour, hour and a half, community conversation with the superintendent. There will be kind of a topic that will be focused on. It might be budget, it might be early childhood and so forth, but it will be more also an open forum for parents and community members to talk about things going on in the district, challenges we might be facing, ideas and suggestions, feedback. This was as a result of, we took the surveys from last year, if you could probably have student staff and a parent survey, kind of look at some of the feedback that we got from it, and having an open forum. It's not intended to be, and I don't expect it to be, but kind of a, you know, yell the superintendent meeting, but more of a conversation about things going on here and different perspectives, because obviously sometimes in the thick of things, we might look at things from one perspective and forget another perspective, just to help us to process things, so, you know, and Joseph and Elizabeth and I talked about hosting similar things like that at the school level for students and possibly staff and for that ages, so that whole core will become the, but it will be put on the calendar. It's, I believe, the third Monday of every month, with the exception of December and March. The March one is the state of the district, which we have a tender scheduled now, so our plans to do that here.
That'll be healthier.
Pardon?
It will be healthier.
Right now, it's planned for this room, just kind of see, to see this, the largest of, the easiest to get in the building for the, for the public, and the largest of the areas to host it. But yeah, if it changed, in the welcome back letter, I'll have the actual location month, we lock them in and decide.
When's the dinner begin, Ryan? Do you have it set?
Then there's the 27th from 5 to 8. Dinner will be served from 5 till about 7, 7:30, a little closer to 7, so they can clean up the kitchens and be ready.
So each building is--
Each building will have, we're doing all Blue Devil Nights on the same night, like we did last, we got a lot of positive feedback on it. We had a lot of, we had a lot of community members. From last year's Blue Devil Night, there were several community members that talked about the lighting that goes up down the road on 32 Matter Road. We did work with ET, they will be installing five lights along the wooden poles that they just installed, so that road will now be lit up. It's just on their timeline now, so we got to wait for ET, but that will be lit up. And the last thing I have, I would just like to thank the Hometown Football League, and I, I don't think I mentioned this previously, but if you go out to the field behind the high school, that there was that old shed, the blue shed with some broken-down tires around it. It's been gone, removed and dismantled, but there was a brand-new blue shed that was donated by the Hometown Football League. They actually, that shed is also host our middle school football equipment, so they're kind of using it in conjunction with the two group, formerly Tappel. But they asked if we would be willing to get a new shed, they would pick up 100% of the cost, and we still prepare, so the Hometown Football League put that, it's a beautiful blue shed that's out there by the parking lot. So, thank you to them. I got the contact information, so we'll be sending them a thank you note on behalf of the district. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is items of interest from the board. Drawing my sticks here, Tracy, who came up first one this time?
I'm good.
Hey, Margaret?
I'm good.
See?
So just real quick, board member Toto, board member Cunningham and I, we did attend the superintendent evaluation training at the ISD. And I don't know, like, everybody's supposed to be trained on it, so I don't know how you want to do that, like, because we can, I guess--
Can you train?
We can train you, that's what we were told, and the rest of the board, so I don't know if you want to, I don't think it'll take very long, to be honest with you, or we could do it at a board meeting, honestly, like, at the next board meeting, really, I don't know. It's really not much different, there's not a whole lot of change.
Just because that's different from what we've been doing.
It is, it is a little different, yes. The biggest difference, Mr. Wamsley did mention earlier, is that it's, it's only three things now, it's--
Right.
It's, yeah, it exceeds, and then it's--
Developing needs improvement.
Developing and needs improvement, or something like that. There's only three things now, and like, you know, 20% of it now is on student growth, where that wasn't the case before, and also, we need to have a conversation too, because technically, our superintendent, Mr. Wamsley, wouldn't have to be evaluated every, every two years, I think, or something like that, because of his past performances, so, but then, then you have like contract issues and stuff like that, so I don't know, we need to, I guess--
Do we have to enforce it because he's under a contract right now?
Well, we don't, we can--
What do you mean enforce? I mean, do we have to follow this new--
We don't, yes, we have to follow this new--
Even though he's under contract, and we have an evaluation in the contract?
No.
And what she's talking about is the difference, there are, well, the school district that was sitting with us, their superintendent, if, their superintendent gets an effective evaluation, they get a 2% salary increase. Okay, so if you, it's now if you get two, three straight, you don't have to have two year something.
Right, yeah, right.
And so our conversation arriving home was just, our superintendent's contract, an effective evaluation rolls--
To the next--
So, to me, I think it comes into, for us, the effective, so he doesn't have to get evaluated, I think it would still roll, but I think that's, that's a conversation--
We need to have--
Contractually, to have the superintendent--
Yeah, because otherwise--
We have to, we have to do this new--
We have, yes, we have to use this new tool, yes.
It's, it's the same tool, basic, but some--
Minor tweaks.
Minor changes.
Okay. Yes, some language changes, but it is the same tool. It's just three different grades instead of four.
Do we have to, why do we have to have it approved then, for your contract?
No, that's not in his contract.
Yes, it is.
No, no, no.
My contract referenced the McComb superintendent model--
That's what this is.
That's what this is.
The difference, the other difference is, the current tool that we've evaluated, 40% of my evaluation is based on student achievement. The state law says no more than 20%.
Right.
So just like teachers and administrators--
Yeah, that's the biggest--
Right, right. In my opinion, what we need, we can, we can have that at a, at a board meeting if we wanted to, just, here's the document, do that. And then I think there has to be a time, a contract conversation--
Yes, I'm thinking, do we need to go into closed session to talk--
Correct.
Right, okay, that's what I was--
It's too separate, we have to do this, but then we have this little thing with the contract.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was wondering.
Yes.
So do we want to do that at the next meeting?
I don't know why not.
Yeah, I mean-- So, one of you will present what, or all three of you who went will present?
Yeah, it's really, yeah, it's, it's going to be really--
It's the next way.
So then, and at that same meeting, then we'll need to go into a closed session to talk contract?
I believe so, yes.
So, when we put our agenda together for next, for next meeting, we need those two pieces, please. Okay, good, 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 good. Thank you, ladies, for going.
Thank you, Cindy. I forgot.
Yeah. Okay, Sandy Oss.
I did my binder too, from the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, do you have it?
Yeah.
Went afterwards, can I look at it?
Sure.
Perfect, okay. So I did--
Yeah, but I think your reference regarding, you have to wait, is if you were changing the instrument--
That's what I was, yes.
Because my contract--
Contract--
Because my contract is through a certain date. It's specified, and if this instrument had to change, either I'd have to agree to it or it has to phase out.
That's what I was wondering. That's why I wanted.
But we're not changing the instrument. It's still the same instrument. It's been tweaked a little to match.
That's what I needed to know.
The instrument itself is not changed.
Okay, good.
Correct.
Because I knew, I knew it wasn't his contract what the tool was, so if it's changing, we have to do something.
Same tool.
Okay, perfect. Okay, Margaret, did I catch you?
You did, and I said I was good.
Okay, thank you. Sandy did. Candace, sorry. I lost track.
I'm, I'm good.
Yes, I am good also, so we will move on. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Since the last board meeting, we did receive an email regarding the new rules and guidelines for, from the Department of Ed on Title IX. I know Mr. Wamsley replied to that email, and I too replied to this person. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name and address. You will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? That's in our board policy? I know when I was reading it. Name and address is in board policy.
I think it is too.
I know it is. I read it when we were doing our review.
You're right, it is in the policy.
I know it is.
Which is why I added it. Because I don't want anybody coming back to me saying, "You were not following board policy."
Okay, being no public comments, we are going to move on to our action items. I am looking for a motion for the approval of the superintendent's emergency authorization for the middle school repairs.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the emergency repairs to the middle school gymnasium to be completed by Ariscope Contracting Group for an amount not to exceed $87,600, as outlined in the attached documentation for which funding from the general fund is authorized.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Tracy.
Tracy, thank you. Any discussion?
I just tell the board, you know, this was completed last Friday. So the painting's been done. You wouldn't even know there was any problems. But it is structurally very sound.
And then do we have like a warranty? Is any kind this time?
No, it's, it's.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the master agreement between Richmond Community Schools and NEA/Early Learning Childhood Center Bargaining Unit.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a three-year contract with Richmond Community Schools Board of Education and NEA/Early Learning Childhood Center Bargaining Unit, effective August 12, 2024 through June 30 of 2026, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Sandy? Thank you. Any discussion? Thanks for this good work. Yes.
Is that three years, though?
It's three, it is three years from the perspective of it's the 23, 24, the current year, 24, 25, and the 25, 26. And the 25, 26 aligns with every other contract that we have. There's nothing more that they got.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a school bus purchase.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of one school bus from Midwest Transit for a total not to exceed $147,052, as outlined in the attached documentation for which funding transferred from the general fund to the non-bond capital projects fund is authorized.
My support?
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to point out, we set aside $150,000 each year for a bus. We're nearing that number.
Right.
So we are getting this in out of 23, based on 23, 24 pricing, not the upcoming pricing. So you could expect that to be $8,000 to $10,000 more for next year's buses.
So do we have to, when we start talking budget at the end of the year or whatever, we're going to have to put a little bit more away?
Yep. If we want to.
If we want to continue what we've been doing. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. They know for their business. The board will adjourn at 10:55. Thank you, everybody.